We are now live on Facebook and live on Zoom.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Solomon. So I will now call this meeting the regular meeting of the class school committee to order on Wednesday, December 21st on 2022. The time is 6:00 PM and 30 seconds. I suppose we won't interrupt that. We are doing a hybrid virtual and in-person learning conference. The virtual is Zoom with chat enabled. So you can ask questions. On Facebook, it's watch and listen only. So if you have a question on Facebook, you yell or try and get onto Zoom and chat with us. We encourage all questions and comments as the meeting proceeds. So with that, we will do our roll call. And that will be by order of Mr. Kenny.
Present.
Mr. Carr.
Present.
Mr. St. Ange.
Present.
Mr. McCollum. And I, Mr. Dial, am present. We have a unanimous school committee here. So I call this meeting to order. We'll now move to our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge.
Flag is over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and law.
All right. So I can't, not even happy to see such a packed room here.
It is.
This is great. It's almost like a real school committee meeting. Now, unfortunately, they're all invited guests. I guess it's not even a problem, but it's good to have you all here. We're happy to hear about your accomplishments and everything you have to share with us. But before we get to that, we do have a quick agenda item to open up the public comment. As a reminder, public comment is for items that are not on the agenda, but yet need to be raised. If you have a comment about an item that is on the agenda, you can let us know at this point. We will make sure to come back to you, but this isn't the time to air the comment. So with that, I'll pause for a couple of beats and see if we have any public comments.
And we may have comments here, too.
Yep. We have a comment? Do we have a public comment?
We do.
Oh, yes. Fantastic.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And my name is Jack Buckley, 272 North Main Street. I'll take only 30 seconds of your time. I just wanted to publicly acknowledge the great relationship. I'm speaking on behalf of the Coasette Center for Student Coastal Research. And I wanted to acknowledge the great relationship that we have with Go Hasse Public Schools and the leadership that Dr. Sullivan and his team and Ryan at the high school and Ed Savage and Dr. Duncan. And I just wanted to express my gratitude for that and request that at some time in the early months of 2023, that we have an opportunity to present to the committee some details about the Noah B. Wett grant that we have and funding that's available to teachers, to schools, and to the great work that the students are doing. And thank you for that opportunity. That's all I wanted to say. And I know that you want to celebrate the fantastic achievements of the girls' soccer team. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I'd just like to echo the reciprocal feelings about our relationship with CSCR. It's a nice way to really get into that innovative learning that we've been talking about, that authentic learning experience. So many of our students enjoy that through Quest Public Schools and also separate with summer programming and such with CSCR. So I'm saying this with obviously Principal Scott here for a different reason, but it's nice that he's here because our collaboration has been really strong. And Dr. Collins echoes that. And that grant is very exciting, Mr. Buckley. So we will certainly have you back, you know, as we talk about the fruits of that and also the continued collaboration that we have. That's what I would add.
Thank you for coming down here to make the comment. It means a lot that you come in person and thank the committee. And we echo our appreciation for you and for the work that the administration is doing in that relationship. Thank you very much. It's great to hear. Any other public comments?
There are no other comments at this time.
Excellent. So with that, we will move on to our invited guests. This is really a pleasure. We are our first guests. So we are honoring the girls' state championships soccer team. Congratulations. You've already got sweatshirts. That's fantastic.
We got it all. Sweatshirts, t-shirts, and rings.
Well, it is. It's an absolute tremendous pleasure to have the girls' soccer team here. They're such a tribute to not only Quest High School, Quest Public Schools, but Go Hasse. I was so impressed with this team and their resilience through really the whole year after that really tough loss last year. And to more than make up for that, and that was also an honor just to be there at that point, to do just a fantastic season and do it with such class and sportsmanship. So it's wonderful. And actually, I have a better director, Retindi, if you want to introduce Coach Beal. And we can start quickly.
Yeah.
But if I could just take a quick moment, I mean, everything that we do here, everything takes community, you know, from the top to the bottom and from the bottom to the top. And everybody here from, you know, Patrick and Leslie from the conversations support, Ryan and John all the time, and Steve. It was really a wonderful experience, something that I know I'll never forget. And I'm sure that these little guys will need it. So thank you. To all of you.
Thank you. You're humble and such a wonderful year. So go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I mean, thank you, of course, for coming tonight and coach and allow us to celebrate you. I think it's very fitting that we have them here tonight because actually our opening meeting this summer to the faculty. We had the captains of this team there to address the faculty and talk about some of the work they've done in the community and the things that they do outside of soccer. And it really set the tone for our year. And I think it speaks volumes to them in that winning state championships and getting to where you are, it's not just a one-season thing. It's years in the making. And there's a lot of other factors that go into it and the things that we bring along. So we always appreciate your time for you coming to these and making time for it. So I'll let you kind of go through it. But one thing I did want to highlight is we did get an invitation to the State House after the first of the year. So we'll be gathering the team and we'll be heading into Boston. And we'll make a fun day out of that. We've done it once before and we want to do it many more times going forward. So we'll make it a fun day. And it's a good experience for all of you. But I will turn it over to Coach Beal, who did such a fantastic job this season leading this group and was recognized by us and also is the coach of the year.
So we had many awards other than the ones that I absorbed. I can tell you about mine after I talk about the kids. But we had plenty of All-Stars here. We had Georgia and Tessa and Tess, South Shore League All-Stars, along with Riley Nussbaum and Kat Herman. And Tess Barrett down at the end there seemed to absorb a lot of our awards. She was the South Shore League Player of the Year last year and this year. And then she also brought home the Division Four Player of the Year, the Eastern Mass Division Four Player of the Year. And I was named the Division Four Eastern Mass Coach of the Year, primarily because of Tess, I think. Because of all our hard work. And then Tess was our first student to ever go on to the All-New England team. So they ranked the kids for the Eastern Mass team, and then they ranked the top 10 for the All-State team. And then they take selected kids from the All-State team for the All-New England team, which is someplace that we've never been before, which is very exciting. And then Tess Barrett and Kat Herman were Patriot Ledger All-Scholastics. And Tess and I just learned that we were Globe. She was a Globe All-Scholastic and I was a Globe Coach of the Year. Yeah. So very exciting.
Congratulations.
But it's not about the awards. We know that. I mean, that one right there is the biggest and best.
Absolutely.
So can we introduce the girls?
Absolutely. So to my right is Peyton Moore. She's a senior captain. Next to her is another senior captain, George Barrett. Next one down is senior captain, Tessa Curatola. And then we have sophomore Tess Barrett and incoming senior captain, Maya Gabriel. So Maya will be our captain next fall.
And I'm glad that you mentioned the most important award.
That is the most important.
Really, what a team. You know, just watching. I was able to see a couple of games through the playoffs and a game in the regular season. It just seemed like there was no way you guys were going to lose. I didn't want to say that, but you could feel it. And it was really just wonderful watching all of you play. It was like people stepping up for each other to make one team. It was just, it was great.
Yeah. I think we did a nice job not getting ahead of ourselves. You know, we opened up the season with two big wins and then we head off to Notre Dame where we, you know, did we even get off the bus that day? We just couldn't get out of our own way. And we suffered a big loss. And then we shifted gears after that and we never lost again. So we finished the season 17-1 and 3.
It's a tribute to all of you and to Coach Beal and your staff for keeping everyone so focused.
It is.
It's an easy thing to do when you have a great team, to make sure that they continue to play great throughout the whole year. So it's a clement itself. So, no, Chairman Dial, if you have any, sorry, I don't want to back for a second. Chairman Dial, if you or the committee have any questions.
I'll open up the floor of the committee. Comments, questions, thoughts? Mr. Carr?
Did you have some fun? So I have daughters and I'm dating myself, but I was, many of these young ladies had to put up with me when they were about this tall over our Milliken Field. I was one of the coaches there. So congratulations on this ticket announcement. Your sport. We're really happy for you all.
Thank you.
Okay. I think it's time we update the banner in the gym for champions of 2022. Congratulations. I think that's an awesome accomplishment. You can have it for the rest of your life. And just hard work and teamwork. It's great.
Thank you.
So.
Congratulations. I think it's so exciting. I mean, I know everything these guys have said. And it's also really nice for the little kids in town. You know, all the little kids know all you big kids. And they're so psyched to see you. And you are like superstars, world cup winners here. So it's just really cool to have you as world models for the different towns around the city. Congrats, ladies.
Thank you.
Mr. McCollum?
Well, congrats, everyone. And I guess I'm curious about what everyone's position is or was if you're senior.
I was center forwards and kind of wing.
I played center mid.
I was goalie. I played center mid as well.
I was just a wing.
Just a wing.
So to the seniors, I know Peyton because she is my daughter's tennis coach and soccer coach and role model. But I am wondering, aside, obviously, from winning state championship, seniors, what can you think of, and this could be like the entire high school experience, like you think of a memory that really sticks with you being on the soccer team at Coasette, other than obviously playing football?
I just think of all of last year, just really thinking like how close our team got. And I think that really helped us this year, too.
Yeah, it was really touching.
Just like team dinners and anytime we just like come out together, it was always fun to like get to know people that you usually don't hang out with at school and just like people in different grades. It was fun to like get close to different types of people.
Yes, I feel like you guys were pretty tight by the time you won the championship. Yeah. That's awesome. Well, congratulations. So happy for you guys. Thanks for coming and sharing.
Thank you.
And I'll love just to add my own congratulations on top of the pile. It's a fantastic achievement. I've heard that 100 times, so you don't need me to tell it to you. The only perspective I'd say is that what you just mentioned about teamwork, pulling things together, these are great skills that sports bring out in people and their life skills. And so not only would it have this great memory to take with you forever, but you also have built up skills that will lead you well in life. So congratulations on the win and congratulations on being part of a great team. And Coach, congratulations on the team and of course, all the accolades that go with it. So thank you very much.
Should we get a picture? If I say that, it'd be wonderful. Maybe the committee could just go right behind the desk and say, sure, we'll get a picture. Back at home, excuse my back. I think I'm taking a picture.
Thanks. I got some. Make it twice.
This is like, they're watching me from home. No other way to do it.
Okay. That's my favorite.
Yes.
There we go. Good website. So we could.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. And congratulations, Principal Scott, as well.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right. Thank you, Sam. Thank you. I don't know. I don't know. I was like. We're like over here.
I'll pay him.
Yeah.
Trophies. Driving laps around town with them.
Look at me.
You can get Instagram photos if you're sleeping with it like messy.
Are you taking a boat? Throw it to another boat like Freddy? I like how you thought you could just, just in case. So that's wonderful. You know, I hope we have many more of those. I love the. And so no doubt, or at least from me, what we were talking about.
And they also had the experience of lighting the lobster pot tree, lobster trap tree, and then also the tree and doing the, in town and being part of the parade, ushering Santa.
That's great. There are town celebrities, although I'm sure those experiences pale in comparison to winning a state championship. They're all.
I thought you were going to say to being here at school.
Well, there is that, too. I think you're going to write that one down forever.
Straight to your.
So great. So I think with that, we'll move on to Mr. McDowell. Welcome to the.
School committee is our new school committee liaison.
Some of you may have had a chance to meet Noah at earlier presentations, but not as a liaison. So it's wonderful to have Noah. Thank you for joining us as a liaison and continue that next year as well. So Noah, maybe you could start by just telling the committee a little bit about yourself. Noah was a junior. I'll tell you a little bit about himself and some of the activities that you're involved in.
Sure. Well, thank you first for having me. My name's Noah McDonald. I'm involved with several activities throughout the town of Coasette. I'm involved with like, for example, CSCR and a few coordinating a few projects there. I'm also quite involved with Coasette Safe Harbor. I am quite involved in like leading the youth ambassadors program, doing a lot of work initiatives and doing some work around the coalition's use of data and data analytics, stuff like that. Also on Committee for Advocacy for mental health on a state level called Whiteout Stigma. It was founded around two years ago. So that's pretty much an introduction of myself.
Wonderful. And as we mentioned, Noah, you have the opportunity now to update the committee on anything happening in student life, anything you'd like the committee to know. The floor is yours.
Sure. Thank you. So school, as far as student life has been going this way. I don't necessarily speak for the entirety of the student body, but from what I've experienced and what my peers have happened and for me, it's been going mostly pretty good for most people. People are ramping up for the holidays. But surrounding the holiday season, there are some concerns, especially in the high school, about workload and how that affects mental health. Teachers obviously have to keep a priorities of keeping us on track with the curriculum, keeping us on track with all the business tests and assignments they have to do to make sure we're on track with the rest of the year and the curriculum as a whole. However, in around the two weeks leading up to holiday break that usually gets bunched up, we can see a large effects it has on mental health of the students leading up to the holiday break with very detrimental effects. And that has been a concern, not just of my own, not just of my peers. But I was talking with the program director of Safe Harbor earlier, Nicole Lashy, about Safe Harbor's interest in mental health going forward, the interest of various groups and the interest of various organizations throughout town in the sphere of mental health and how mental health is going to focus for that.
That's wonderful. And I do say that's been a focus of Principal Scott and his team as well in making sure that, you know, we understand about the process and it's not always, you know, the items that people look at as maybe the important achievement in terms of a score or grade. You know, it's about the process and that you need to understand that, you know, there's more to life than that. So I think we've really done a nice job at the high school and that's part of the find the compass thing. I really appreciate your honest thoughts and comments there. That's very well taken by me and I'm sure the committee as well. So I'll leave it to you. Thank you, Noah.
Anything else to add? I'll open the committee board.
We, I'll mention it that we had a couple of nice, just to add to in terms of social life, Noah wouldn't actually necessarily be in tune with this, but we had the holiday strolls at Osgood. Looking over at Principal Farrell there, they were wonderful family events. We had a tremendous, and we're basically the, basically the grade level classes did some songs and then they all went to the cafeteria and did a craft with families, which was really engaging and nice, warm activity. We also had a wonderful holiday concert, winter concert from the Quest High School Arts Program. It was wonderful with choral and band and jazz band. It was tremendous. Thank you, Stephanie Moriarty and everyone who helped with that. And today, we, Dr. Collins, and I enjoyed, I know, Sina. Enjoyed a wonderful concert at Deer Hill to watch the chorus and band students perform under the guidance of Mr. Lewis, Mr. DeWall. That was also tremendous. And I mentioned Mulan last time. Principal Mills, I don't know why we leave it out there. But we've just had a nice sort of end to the year, really, think about the calendar year, with some of these celebratory events. So add to your, what you're saying, so.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell. I'll open up to the committee for questions. We'll go in turn. Mr. Carr, any questions for Mr. McDowell?
Thanks for joining us. We look forward to working with you. Feel free to invite any students that want to come along. We actually have a little fun around here sometimes. So that's not too bad. We've known you were coming and we're glad you're here. So thanks very much.
Well, thank you. Mr. Kenny?
Yeah, Noah, I'm very impressed with what you do with the community and what you do with Safe Harbor and I know you were with children, Jared and the girls. It's wonderful if I can just give a plug for Safe Harbor. It's such a wonderful thing, such a blessing. It's down to happen. And I think that anybody who can take it there to join that program and listen, we have like 49.
Around 50 members?
Yeah. Yeah. And I'll probably say that my kids are a part of it and I'm glad you're a leader there. Yeah.
I'm Mr. St. Ange?
Thank you, Noah. I'm really impressed by your resume. And I appreciate your feedback and what you're bringing to us. I'm curious, kind of just with the pacing of things leading up to the holidays, I completely understand it gets crazy. Are you like, what kind of solutions would you suggest? Sort of like, how could we alter the pace of things? Or what do you think would be a solution?
Well, I think internally, just within faculty of the school, teacher population, greater coordination of like assignments and workload, as well as greater communication between generally the faculty and the student body. I think both the communication between the faculty and the student body will allow for like preparation of students in relation to assignments and just like reduce stress as a whole and greater coordination of most of faculty, like reduce the stress we're asking for with the student bodies. Distribution of the workload and concentration.
Great. Great. Well, I'm not in charge of the national, but I do like problem solving. And I think that I have felt that as a teacher and as a student and having, looking at that big picture and thinking about pacing and making sure that people are on the same calendar, the same page does can make a great difference and relieve that feeling of stress leading up to the holidays. So I appreciate it for you.
I struggle. Noah, deep understanding of course that as a junior, you may not have had, you know, maybe the first sort of normal high school holiday experience. But is this like a recent development or do you think this is always the case?
I think this is a consistent issue, especially with upperclassmen. I've been talking to a lot of my peers and a lot of my peers taking more advanced courses, AP courses, are having the same problem. Starting like sophomore year, a lot of me and my peers' experiences last year like go up, especially a few days before, there was a lot of assignments crammed in at the last moment. A lot of stress building amongst the student body.
And how is that stress, if it's been, it's like anyway, manifesting itself when students are talking about like sleeping or not getting up.
So the student body as a whole, as you pointed out, it manifests itself in several different ways. Sleep and lack of, as you mentioned, but also somewhat like disillusionment with their classes. They might try less. They might not be able to put as much like forward with their classes because of the amount of academic pressure culminating every time. So feeling overwhelmed. Yes.
All right. Well, thanks. Well, well presented. No, thanks for your attendance here. That's, it's an excellent presentation. Thank you for doing it. And I also want to specifically acknowledge your courage. You're coming here to the committee of the school in front of, actually, planned or not, in front of all the principals. And the administration. And you're not afraid to offer constructive feedback, which is excellent. And the topic you're raising is an important topic. I know in my conversations with the administration and just from the topics from this committee, that student mental health is a focus of what we're trying to do. And I want you to know your remarks are heard and understood. And what I would follow up with is an ask. In your role as this school committee liaison, you have a, you're in a unique position to have access to Dr. Sullivan and leadership and so on. And if you could go and think about what you brought up here and in line of some of the questions that Mr. St. Ange had, and think of maybe small bite-sized things, some specific actionable things that can do or some specific on Tuesdays, this is a problem, you know, are, here are three examples where these classes overlapped in a way that was very difficult. And if you can compile some specific examples, that's something that is very valuable to a group trying to solve a problem. So I think enhancing communication and collaboration across groups, always something we want to do. But with your input for your discussions with peers, if you can bring specific examples to the administration, I think that would be really helping us sizing the problem and seeing what we can do to address it. There's always going to be stress. That's just, that's just the nature. I mean, it's in school, it's in work, it's in politics, everywhere. But we want to make sure that it's not unnecessary to do and that it doesn't prohibit people from doing other hopes and dreams that they're trying to accomplish. It's important to learn. It's also important to grow and do all the other things that you need to accomplish in school. So thank you very much for your presentation.
It's a nice topic for our committee as well. And, you know, this is, believe me, as Mr. McCollum said, this is something that we do work on and something that is really important to us. So it's nice to have that partnering. The student voice is wonderful. So thank you.
Anything else?
Thanks, Noah.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
You, too.
Okay, thank you.
So going through that bullet point, we move on to Mr. Retindi. I believe you're here. Report a fall season recap and then a update on a fitness situation.
Well.
Move the chairs inside, yeah.
I see the chairs.
And congratulations on a wonderful fall season above all the sports teams. Really tremendous year.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you for having me. Just kind of wanted to recap our fall season. Obviously, having some of the students here tonight and having them share their experiences. It was a good one. Before I go through some of the kind of highlights and statistics for the season, I think one of the biggest things has been our participation. Our participation numbers continue to be one of the highest around. And I think that's kind of the foundation and building block of the success of a lot of these teams is how many kids come out for the sport and maybe fall in love with it and grow with it over time. But our teams continue to, you know, fill all rosters and levels and teams. And it was just a really successful fall. So I provided a handout that we have up here, but to get this kind of some of the overviews and accolades, specifically this season, talking about the four kind of field teams, your boys and girls soccer, field hockey and football that participate in the state rankings. All four of those teams finished ranked in the top eight going in. that participate in the state rankings, all four of those teams, um, finished ranked in the top eight going into the, the season. So, um, some of the sports, you know, we're talking sixty-ish teams and every, um, girl soccer was number one. Uh, football was number two, field hockey was number three, and boy soccer was number eight. So, um, to have four teams going into the tournament at that, at that ranking is just really impressive. Um, throughout the season, we ended up with twenty-seven league all-stars, uh, three league MVPs. Again, the, you're talking seven sports, so three of the seven sports, cohesive was home to the most valuable player. Um, we have fifteen student athletes selected as a Patriot Ledger, all scholastic this fall, um, which we'll see when that gets printed. But I think we're going to be up there as, as the most or close second, um, as the most all-scholastics for the fall season. We had three, uh, selected as, uh, Harold All-Scholastics, uh, two in the Boston Globe. And both of those are statewide, um, the Herald and the Globe. Um, and then Eastern Mass Soccer All-Stars, three. Uh, you just met Tess Barrett, who's all-state. Uh, we had three sectional champions and a state champion. So, um, yeah, again, it was, um, a successful season. And, uh, football made it to the state semifinal again. They were a game away from getting back to Gillette Stadium. Field hockey was in the state semifinals. They lost in a shootout, which is probably the most heartbreaking way to end a season. Um, and, and the other teams were just really successful. Um, national letters of intent, we had two this fall. We have Cat Herman, who signed, um, a, a letter of intent to play soccer at Northeastern next year. It's really impressive. And, and Luke Novo, who signed his letter of intent, he's going to play baseball at Franklin Pierce. So, um, that was a great start to the season this fall. And then we have, it's, the numbers growing by each day. Students that are going to continue their, um, athletic careers at the next level, uh, at the D-three level. Um, and we'll do something for them in the spring. Um, so we'll highlight that, um, group of student athletes as well. I think that highlights really most the, the sports, if you have any questions there. But again, an extremely successful fall season, um, by the teams. And again, I highlight that participation, um, rate because we have, we have a lot of kids playing sports here and that's really how it all starts.
So, do we know someone on the Patriot Ledger?
I think it's, I think more the numbers, the, the, the numbers don't lie. But again, the Patriot Ledger is, um, more local, South Shore schools and towns. Um, but again, the Globe and the Herald is they, they take it, uh, nomination statewide.
Sam just scrolling through the, uh, accolades, but very impressive, very impressive.
Wait, what about volleyball, which I know has not had time to earn accolades yet? But maybe you were already planning to speak to volleyball, but I would like to hear about their fall season because it's sport, you're not.
Yeah, yeah, sure. So, um, in, in the success of the fall season, one of the, and, um, I plan to talk about what we also added a sport. So, um, and again, and, and, uh, growing the participation. So, volleyball started this season. We had twenty-four student athletes come out for the team and, and they had a great, they had a great year. So, we, um, we look forward to continue to growing that, that sport. I think the participation, um, you know, when speaking about the highlights was we had some, some new student athletes to our program. It wasn't necessarily create, like, taking current members of teams and bringing them over to a new sport. Granted, that may have happened, but it was really more, um, creating participation for kids that hadn't played a sport or hadn't had a home. So, uh, at, from my observation, it was a really good experience. It was all smiles in the gym with, with the students. And so, um, on top of the resume, um, yeah, of the, of the fall season, I think adding a sport to the program, um, was another success.
So, what's our overall student participation rate?
Um, it's, it's usually somewhere between eighty-five percent, could be eighty, eighty-five percent. Yeah, depends on, I think, fall, the fall is.
Winter's less.
Yeah. Winter's less offerings, uh, fall and spring are very high.
But overall, about eighty-five, eighty, eighty-five percent of our students?
It's eighty-five percent. Yeah. Yeah.
That's great.
We, we also had the, uh, fi- financials that were sent ahead. So, might be a good time to ask any questions about that.
Sure, yeah.
Absolutely. Then we'll get into some other specifics. So, I think they said, I think you sent that in an email to you.
Yeah. Yeah, it's like starting on page three of that.
Okay. Yeah, classic fall, I guess.
Yeah. And then the vice break down.
Just wondering if anything you want to highlight in the, the financial presentation or, I know, uh, some might also, um, be your failure, right? But, uh, we do have this from the committees, if there's anything that, uh, you want to know about the money?
Yeah, no, um, no, no major changes from, from previous years. Uh, again, it includes participation on there, so those numbers stayed along. Obviously, I think, um, one number that was glaring is we've had our, hosted a Thanksgiving Day football game for the first time in three years. And that, um, naturally brings in, um, a large sum of, of money through gate receipts. So, there is a, an increase there that wouldn't be on a previous report. But other than that, um, year to year, everything, um, just will match up. No, no major variances to, uh, to cover some, some additional costs in, um, facility rental or space. And that was just more with our field being unavailable at times. We rented space or, um, you know, a lot of the neighboring schools were fantastic neighbors and took good care of us. But things like custodial costs were something that obviously we wouldn't expect them to waive or anything like that. So, um, those would be some increases that aren't on a year-to-year report.
Uh, and as far as just general habits of your funding, do you have any major pressing needs? Or do you feel like you have been able to do the things you needed to?
Yeah, I think, I, I think in, in terms of operating the, the teams and the succeed, the seasons and, and giving coaches and, and the programs and the kids what they need to be successful, absolutely, I think, um, everything is there adequately and, um, we're able to, to do everything that we, that we need to do to operate.
What about buses? Like enough buses to get everywhere, everyone everywhere on time?
Um.
Say that because talking to my teenage friends on the volleyball team, just my niece this long time. Um, just at one point she said something about volleyball team was late because they were sharing a bus with someone else and then they got dropped off afterwards.
Well, so we rely on our, it's our own buses.
Yeah.
To, to do that. So, some of the same effects that we've had on our, our own bus routes have spilled over a bit into some of the athletics. So, um, you know, w- w- whether it was particular situation, it was a human error scenario potentially, because we've had a couple of loops. But, um, we, we are obviously, just as we're strapped for buses, uh, with our regular routes, the same effects happen with buses for athletics at times.
Right, which is why I'm bringing it up because teams should be where they're supposed to be on time.
Of course.
As kids should also be at their bus stop on time, right? Like, all of these things should be happening.
I think Letty's got a good point. However, I do want to say that Steve, year after year, has asked for a particular bus that we haven't been able to get. And that would alleviate a lot of problems, such as having freshman basketball ticket. You can't have one because of the non-bus.
Right.
Um, and he's asked for years and years for that particular bus. The golf team can get in the, in the, in, in the van and go. And, uh, so those are some of the things that, that I think you've been quite good at telling us what we need, but year after year, we keep, can't, kicking down, uh, can't down the road. So, um, as much as I like to say that the success is, is there on this, I think that the, the problem isn't, I've heard, the bus situation. Um, I do think though, if we can get another bus, that would help. I do think that if you get some help, that would help. It's during the COVID. Noah, and I do want to, uh, commend you and all the teachers for all the work that you guys have done to actually even put us together. And you do all the moving desks and, and, you know, it, I mean, it was clearly difficult to do. I can't imagine what you would want to do. So, that I would say, I would also try to advocate a little bit more for that bus to be able to bring.
Yeah.
To solve that.
Yeah, like say it's a problem, don't say it's not.
No, no, it's, well, no, that's what I'm saying. Like, he's said it the last two years, three years that I've been sitting on the committee. We've tried to come up with ways, but we just keep getting shot down. And, and those are the direct reality of like, somebody can just getting the bus and drive the kids to the golf.
So, uh, you know, for, for, I guess, could you, I mean, hearing this, could you comment on, um, you know, your, your needs respective to transportation? And we have seen over the years, uh, a request for, I think it was a ban, uh, for sports, I don't think that has been filled. But I guess, you know, can you give me just additional color on your thoughts on, on that and where that ranks in your, uh?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, um, again, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's, um, it's, it's a problem that is just in cohesive. I think over the last couple of years, we've seen the shortages of transportation, the shortages of drivers. At one point in time, they were asking the National Guard to come in and drive buses for Boston Public Schools. So, um, not to say that those things aren't there when there are times we haven't been able to get a bus or we try to find other solutions or, or get creative. Um, I think I obviously communicated with our leadership team of where we're at. And I would certainly be more vocal about it and speak to it if I felt like it was something just unique or specific to our district. And, um, obviously collaborating with athletic directors from the Cape through about Quincy is our district. Um, we're constantly talking about different ways and collaborating together of where we're at. And I've certainly asked the question, this is what's going on here. Um, are you facing the same thing or is this just a me problem? They're like, no, I had this happen today. I had to put three teams on one bus and we couldn't get one. We had to move a game to a different day. We have to use weekends. We have to move it to the later in the evening. So, um, it's, it's certainly, um, out there. Um, and again, not just unique to cohesive. And I think all the districts are continuing to look for ways to provide more transportation. Um, and, and certainly I echo and completely agree. I want all of our teams at all of their athletic events on time and where they need to be. Um, and, you know, in a, in a, in a way that we can continue to play competition in schools that we want to seek out and not have that limit up, limit us because of the distance or travel it might be. So, um.
And one of the ideas, um, that Mr. Kenny referenced was to have more leased vans, um, correct? We talked about that and finance facilities. I don't want to go out of turn here, but, but that indeed is a, uh, an option. There's so many want to talk about that over there.
So, um, our, our capital list is, is a, a van or a mini bus, um, nine thousand dollars to leave spot. But in, from the conversation with our budget facilities, um, committee, we talked about maybe we could lease, um, which is brought up by Paul. Lease two, two of them.
Right.
So, two fifteen-passing transit vans, um, because it's after school and it's teams, they don't have to have a special driver.
That's right. And that would, that would take care of most of our team.
Talking to Steve, we take care of all of our teams to fit on two, acceptable.
Yes.
Um, so that's, we're waiting, we're waiting for a call back from one of, um, the same company that, where the police have buses from. See what the cost of the vans will be, so I can update the capital number, um, right now while I send this design of the van.
A picture.
I said that to Steve today, they sent me a picture, but I really want to know what it's going to cost.
And kudos to.
Where we're at and that would be a, a, I would say, quick and easy fix, but it would be a fix.
And kudos to, to Athletic Director Rattan and also to the finance facilities, uh, team for really problem solving that. I think that could be an excellent solution, um, as we move forward with that uncertain bus. To your.
Any other questions possible?
I was just going to share one thing. Um, so the, uh, Pennskeeman recently chairs the, uh, sports committee that uses the Barnes complex over there. Want to make sure you heard, we, uh, took a vote and are going to fund the repairs to the scoreboard over there because we use it a lot. And even though it's not one of our fields, we're doing that, we wanted to, so if you need anything from those guys, they're going to be bored, have to work for us.
They had helped us.
Yes, thank you.
A great thing.
I have another volleyball question.
Sure.
I can't stop. Um, with the gym, um, obviously it's set up for one volleyball board, all right? But then, but can it accommodate two, like two could fit?
Yes.
Two games could go on simultaneously or staggered? So, are there lines in place and net, like, is there a plan to have that happen in the future as the team grows? Is there like a freshman team and JV team or?
So, most, most schools operated where they do it at different facilities. So, they wouldn't, you know, necessarily put the divider down and have two games going on simultaneously. Because yes, it blocks the viewing point, but the sound, it doesn't change. So, you have two games, two whistles going on at the same time.
Which happens in other sports and is able to function, but continue.
Um.
Like basketball, I'm sorry to interrupt.
But, but in a, in a contest, like a varsity contest, it's rare to see that.
Okay, anyway.
Maybe like a, like a youth basketball scenario would happen. In a, in a varsity sport, it would be really debilitating.
Yeah, I mean, to speak to basketball, it's, we play one game at a time. So, the JV plays first and then the varsity plays second, but we don't play both of them side by side in the gym, certainly for practices, that's fine. But only one game, um, is, is at a time. Volleyball will be the same way. That's what we did this season a couple of times for volleyball. We did play two back-to-back games. So, one would play and then finish and then the next one would go. So, again, in operating off of, in growing from a varsity to varsity and JV or multi-level program, that's how we would operate, being in the same gym. Um, one team would play and then they would be staggered and the next one would play. Um, in terms of a practice, the smaller side of the gym, should call it the middle school side, it is not lined for volleyball. Um, and, and at this stage, we only have the one netting system. Um, but that is something where if down the road, we were to add a sec, to add a second netting system, we would look at is, would we want to do it there? Would we want to have a greater discussion and see if Deer Hill was a possibility? Sorry. Um, and, and so those would be the, the considerations there if we wanted to follow that approach.
And, uh, I don't know if there are more questions on the financials, we, we, because just the fitness centers on.
Yeah, I was just going to turn, any other questions for Mr. Rattan on the fall recap or on the financials before we go to the fitness center?
I just have a quick, like I bring another idea, um, the gate seats. Um, I think we did better than last, well, obviously during COVID, we didn't really have. Um, but we talked about, maybe we can talk a little bit more as a subcommittee about trying to raise those, uh, fees. When you go to a game, to be honest with you, it's like five dollars and you're always like, you know. So, I was always a big opponent of like a season pass, right? Like a hundred and fifty dollars, you could buy every pass, every game. I see that we're doing really well with football. It's just that gym sock, girl soccer actually made a little bit, but other sports aren't really holding their own in a way. Um, so I would think that if we were to offer a season pass where you could use the pass to each and every game as a family, maybe charge a hundred and fifty dollars for a family, you know, something that I think that would double the nineteen thousand each year. Number twenty grand. Especially like if you can buy a ticket online, you can just go up, because it, it, it really is a pain in the neck to look around. It's embarrassing, you don't have any money on you. You're like, should I sneak in? But, uh, you know, so I was thinking that maybe we can talk about that sometime. See what way we can raise that.
It's undoing.
Bringing it up every year, I just, yeah, bring it up again.
Yeah, and speak to, one of the things I'm looking into, more schools going in that direction, but with the MIAA tournament nowadays, for a lot of people that have been to those playoff games, you have to buy a ticket through GoFan. And I think in the first couple of years, that has also come with some obstacles that people haven't loved about it. But as we get more used to it, um, schools are adopting it to use it as strictly for all their, all their tickets. And myself as well, once we, you know, check, go through the proper channels, I would like that too. Because then that even, you know, that removes the handling of cash or, you know, things like that. It goes all into one central place. You can track it, you get a report through it. And as more and more school, schools do it and people get used to it, um, but I found this year with the state tournament, even people show up and they don't have a cell phone or they don't have a smartphone. Now, we have a grandparent that's stressed out because they think they can't get the game, which on my way to now that we always accommodate and take care of them. But as more people get comfortable and used to it, I, I'd like to, um, ask if we can adopt that.
Great, you said it was GoFan.
GoFan, yeah.
Okay, good.
Why don't we, why don't we, uh, close the fall season recap, uh, on that note, and we'll move on to the fitness center update.
Okay, well, just, um, Athletic Director Tand talked about it, of course, but, um, obviously, we're still talking about funding sources, potential funding sources for the, the fitness center. But what, maybe we'll start with just giving everyone an idea of what the vision is for this facility. Because I think it's pretty exciting. So, I don't know which wonderful diagram you want me to show. You want me to show the three Ds or you want to go? Okay, great. Do you want to show the current ones first?
Yes.
Let's do that, okay. Uh, please, you said that down there. Let me see, uh. Just one second. Talk about something. Progress. Doesn't seem like I am, but I am. Here we go, I got it.
There we go.
Yeah, it's the silence. There's nothing worse than Zoom silence. I just had to say, because Michael experienced. Yeah, it's the silence. There's nothing worse than zoom silence. I just had to say, Michael, it's very zoom. So these are uh, Athletic Director Tand, walk us through this.
Yeah, so this is um, our current um, fitness center as it sits. Um, and you know, over the last, I'd say about full calendar year now, have been um, having conversations and, and having meetings and, and getting layouts of how we can improve um, this space. Um, obviously, once upon a time, this was in, in new condition and we've certainly um, got our use uh, and our value out of the equipment. And we're just trying to move into a direction of, of updating the space, making it more inviting, brighter. Um, kind of remove some of the equipment that's kind of obsolete um, in today and, and bringing in more uh, new age pieces of equipment to just make the fitness center something that, that's really inviting and welcoming to the kids, whether it's before school, after school, faculty as well, um, and, and try to make it a more high-traffic uh, facility.
As you can see, there's just, there's a lot of wear and tear. And, and not a lot of space in between some of the influences.
How old is most of this equipment?
The original donations were in the eighties.
A lot of it looks like it's good value.
That was in the eighteen, but yeah, some of that stuff I think was from.
And then Gerald.
Some of them look like they're on the water.
I think it's a weight is a weight, but it's uh, you know, that's why we're still, still able to use it, yes.
And there's a, there is a um.
Yeah, I scratched my.
An accessibility ramp within the fitness room that actually doesn't function as a accessibility ramp because there's no need to have one.
Yeah.
Because the actual space is accessible.
I think again, I'm trying to age it. I, I wouldn't be able to directly answer this question, but that, that handicap ramp is in there because previously outside of the fitness center was stairs to go down and now it's a ramp. So I don't know when that renovation was made, but that would help clue in of.
So this just gives you an idea of the um.
Cassette player there.
Yeah.
It's a dual cassette though.
I saw, I like. Um, so uh, and would you like me to share the, the renderings?
That'd be great. Yeah, so really over the last year, you know, we started with just having a conversation with some companies, see what they could give us for, um, you know, measuring out the space, seeing what our options would be, what could stay, what walls were weight-bearing, what, what isn't. Um, and then we had the Cohasset building inspector came in and just talked about what we would need to do, um, which was, it's not a lot, which is, which is great. Um, and then continue to move forward with ideas like lighting and flooring and spacing um, and equipment. So um.
I'll actually go up and give you a kind of view of all that. This is sort of obviously first I view down.
This is that same room?
Same room. Um, the ramp is removed where you see the treadmills and the bikes um, at the bottom of the screen. That's, that's where the ramp currently sits. Again, it's just more of a, a, an increase of a lot of machines that are multifunctional. Um, I was saying to Dr. Sullivan earlier, the one that's there in the middle of the room and room, it's also, um, it's handicap accessible. Um, it has a wheelchair space to it where, where someone that were handicap would be able to access and use the fitness center as well. Just a lot of the, the newer equipment you see in gyms and, and fitness facilities today.
This gives you different angles of it. Episode seven, so I'll just go through. There you have, this is sort of a rundown.
Breakdown of pieces. Yeah. And then there's also um, cables um, and like medicine balls and stuff that, that a part of it too. And, and the plan would be there. We already have some currently secured into the walls outside of the fitness center. So this would just more add to that so that more um, students could use it at the same time. And those are all like weight-bearing vans and. Enjoy that.
So we, and we did put together a proposed timeline. We've had, you know, your pricings on leasing uh, the equipment. We have a proposed timeline for implementing certain uh, items in the, in the room. Um, but again, that would also be based on our, our financial kind of route. How, I don't know, would you like, if you'd like me to show that uh, possible plan or how we might want to discuss this?
Yeah, let's, 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 let's show the possibly, obviously the, um, what, where my head's going next is, is, is tossed. Um, because I see those slides and I want, I want that, you know. Question is, do we, I mean, this is great.
Bullet for funding.
Um, so let's uh, let's look at the.
So this is a, um, this is a, this is sort of a, um, it, it kind of talks about it a little bit. I don't know if you want to walk through this. This is a possible outline, outline of the timeline.
Yeah, so um, sorry, Doc, so you mean start on just what our, go through the timeline or talk about the financial piece with the leasing?
Do you want to do the fi- financial piece first or, or potential timeline?
Either way.
All right, just, you're going to show the timeline and then we'll get to the nitty-gritty of the.
Yeah, yeah. So the timeline, um, right now, um, we were looking at, jump ahead the potential of um, an April vacation install that would get us, you know, a, a program up and running and back in that space before the end of the school year and leading into a, um, a summer, a summer program and kind of finishing up some work that would need to be done in there, like the, the removal of that ramp you see at the bottom. But really what we would do now is secure the funding, um, get, get a contract signed and then signed. And then by February break, um, we would start posting for a position, start um, looking at where we could remove some of the, some of the equipment. I think um, we've discussed, we would do that on our own. Um, and then also um, painting the room um, as you see there. And then I think we would, while we're there too, look into the lighting of the space. Um, and then remove everything by, by April break. Um, and, or at least put into storage till we decide where, what we can, would do with it. Um, and then, and then we would hopefully for the summer have a fully functional fitness summer program and, and with the facility open.
This was, this is our hope. And I, I should mention that the posting of staff positions, that's something that we'd have to talk about with the CTA to ensure that we're on the same page as to what the staff would be. It's just something you do with any staff. We also talked about a potential of having a standard position for here after uh, you know, certain hours. So students might be able to come here and do some, some studying. Um, they might go along with that. Um, but this is a, a very possible timeline uh, depending on funding sources. So when we go to the funding now, do we, um, do you know which, do you have anything in here about the funding?
Yeah, it's um, it's in that um, the 3D layout, talking, one of the.
Oh, I should mention, this is one um, one additional thought um, of rendering of just what the equipment would look like with the, some of the.
I don't know if you can zoom in there and, because you can see it on that one um. Yeah, um, I don't know how much we'll clear up. Yeah, so as you, as you can see there, I mean, the equipment would be customized. It, it's nice to have the Cohasset logo and then on all the benches and chairs of all the equipment. Um, you know, we have our C stitched into it, which is a nice touch. So everything you're seeing in that 3D layout, um, this is essentially the color that it would be in. And, and that's what the, um, all the seats, um, and benches would, would look like. Um, and so the, and I don't even know if you need to pull it up. But to speak to the financing piece, we, we sat, we went through the different options and really um, through suggestions and, and help, um, we looked at, at a leasing option, which is, which is great. It would, um, you get the equipment installed, it would break down into payments um, over a three to a five-year period. And then at the end of that lease, you purchase all the equipment for a dollar. Um, so essentially over the lease period, you're paying for it in total. And then at the end of that lease, um, you're able to, to purchase it outright um, at a dollar's cost. So um, we would use the athletic revolving account to um, offset right now to be able to get it signed. And then obviously, the hope would be through starting the summer program and using, doing what some of the other schools do, that we'd be able to generate and bring in revenue that way. That would help us not only with our payments, but start building up a replacement schedule so that we're not in, you know, thirty years from now, we're looking to revamp the whole thing all over again. It's more over time, or we have money to replace pieces of equipment and bring in new um, ellipticals and treadmills and, and things like that and really build up. Um, that way, I think it would also really benefit us if uh, the community support and outreach to see if we could, in the form of um, donations or naming rights or different things, see if we could get, um, you know, I'd love to get the teams and the, and the students and the coaches to not just reach out and say, hey, will you write a check to us? But what can we do out in the community? Where can we outreach? Where can we have some fun with it as well to bring in some revenue to really um, finalize and be able to support this?
And that's, that's one pathway towards this. And then of course, there's the pathway through capital, which is something that, I don't know if you want to explore that later. It is on our agenda later on.
But before we um, before we do that, I guess, uh, do you have the numbers? What, what's, what's the total cost?
The, those are there. The, the total cost for the equipment, the install and to completely redo all the flooring is around two hundred thousand dollars.
Well, we could, yes. The equipment's one fifty and then maybe capital fifty.
Yeah, that's a good point. The, the equipment fully installed is one fifty and then the flooring is, is another fifty, an additional fifty.
One fifty, we could lease.
Well, probably should be, like, five, you know, it should be about forty, forty-eight thousand a year.
That's supposed to be two hundred.
Right, that's the whole, that's the whole thing.
Oh, that, that includes the uh, renovations, the flooring.
So it's about forty-eight thousand all year and that would be a lot of concern. Year one, um, we probably could sustain it every year.
No, that's the, that's part of the unknown.
Yeah, we should also note that the police officers and firefighters use it. So and then not only that, that the teachers will be able to use it. And you know, I would just, I just want to give everybody a couple of fun facts. Fun fact is less absenteeism, better decision makers. Um, grades will increase self-esteem, mental health, we talked about mental health. Um, these are all the things that are, that are going to be, so, I don't want to say solved, but this is definitely going to help the students, the teachers, the town uh, to be able to use these equipment. Because like we talked about, what about the fifteen percent of the kids that aren't participating in sports? This will give them an outlet to get there. You know, a lot of kids found their way and I talk to people all the time, just FYI, and then, you know, full disclosure, I'm in the fitness business and I, I see this as such a good possibility for people that are struggling in school to be able to go in there. And you talked about in the human school, the dungeon, right? And, and this gives it, it gives it, this won't be a dungeon, but it'll be a, it'll be a nice fitness center for somebody who doesn't participate in sports, to be able to go into a spa, run twenty minutes on the, on, on the treadmill. And then all these machines are designed for upper body one day, lower body the next. So what you basically do is you could give a kid a workout card and explain to them what they're doing. And, and it's pretty much you're working every exercise for every, um, major muscle group without uh, and that's what the machines do, which kind of shows you how to do it without like a personal trainer. So there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of ways to use this club, uh, fitness center to improve health for a lot, not just the students, but the community as well.
That's some, that's, that's helpful. We do have slated to discuss uh, on the capital side, potential funding issue. I guess, uh, setting aside the funding then for now, is there anything else you want to add about the fitness center and the, and the potential plan and the opportunity?
No, I think that.
Is it a P E class like it used to be?
Yes.
Like every, like even if you're not a student athlete, you are getting regular exposure and instruction on how to use this.
Yes, yeah.
I might just add, so we did, a subcommittee discussed this on a number of occasions. We've looked at all the financing, a couple of important things. The vendor is a state vendor in good standing, so we could, we're in alignment with procurement, should be able to do this. I think we're right to um, to think about how can we afford this for the long term? While we have a short-term solution, uh, we discussed all of these things. But I, I think overall, I won't speak for everybody in the committee, but we were very enthusiastic on the opportunity of proving this. Uh, so, but I think it's very right to figure out how do we afford it, uh, to do it. But we also have to understand that the price is going to go up almost eight percent this year. Yeah, so the more we wait, the more that equipment is going to cost.
Let, let's do table the finance costs because we have some, by the guests that I also want to talk about and they're also uh, coincidentally talking about budget, uh, which will influence, so that, that's helpful. Uh, but before uh, Mr. Tundey, you go, any other questions, comments for the committee about the fitness center itself? Again, funding will, will, will later, later in the meeting.
I just like to make it clear for the community what the next step is. I don't want people misinterpreting this to mean that like this is definitely happening. I, I can, can someone just clarify? Because I don't even know what I'm saying here.
So right now, we, the committee has heard a proposal for a fitness center upgrade, replacement refurbishment. Um, we've heard that it would cost somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred thousand dollars. Heard that we have funding plans that recover the first year and about twenty-five percent of the total cost and some potential thoughts on sourcing revenues for the next three years. Uh, we, at this point, are not going to do anything with that. We're going to continue to discuss at the, not at the, later agenda item. We have our finance discussion which is coming up. Um, where if, what our capacity is in our budget to absorb this and where we will rank this in the overall um, cap priorities of the committee as far as spending the, the district's money. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so when do we expect a, a vote on, on, on allocation of funds to this project?
So it could be as early as later, as later as me. So we, we, it's all within this discussion uh, in the context of overall funding. Because I don't want to do a two hundred thousand dollar vote absent other discussions of finance.
Sure, and, and also obviously being. Yeah, sensitive to, you know, notice that the community has had about this issue as well. Like I, I feel like this is maybe the first time that we substantively discussed it.
Yep.
Um, and if we vote on it tonight, that, that may be a, a big step.
Yep, for folks.
I'm just making that, so.
Thank you. Right. Uh, here are your other questions and no public comment. Um, I think that concludes, uh, Mr. Tundey. Thank you very much for your updates and your proposal.
Thank you.
Actually, Mr. Tundey, you can just stay right there if you will, because I'm going to have like. Team junior, I, next up is uh, school news. And I actually gave my two school news points when I talked about the holiday stroll, the concerts. So I, without further ado, and I want to thank you for your patience and waiting, I'd like to invite members of the leadership team, I have four principals and of course, Mrs. Solanka.
We do have food services update.
We do. But that's like.
Can you do that as they come? I moved the table back until I have it.
Aye, second motion.
Sorry about that. Any, any opposed here?
All right, we'll table the uh, food service update and move on past the uh, to the budget and finance updates. Thank you very much.
Super. Okay, well, I, as I don't get a chance to do enough, and if I do have a public opportunity, I want to thank the individuals here at the, at the table in front of you for all the amazing work they do as well as the, the uh, the entire leadership team every day. Cohasset Public School is very special and I'm very, very thankful to be with them as a, as a team. And with that spirit, we are presenting to you today the first run of the budget, which in our budget calendar, we're actually combining with a bit of a workshop. So we thought be, particularly as I had mentioned, uh, several of the uh, potential uh, items in terms of staffing at the MCAS uh, meeting when we talked about our MCAS action plan, thought this would be a more appropriate way to merge those two ideas. So um, obviously, just as a quick, a quick introduction, we have Athletic Director Retandi. We have Principal Brian Scott from High School, Principal Lisa Powell from Osgood, Osgood. And Principal Alex Sullivan from Deer Hill, Principal John Mills from Middle School. And of course, Mrs. Solanka, without a placard in front of her, but which she usually does when she's at this table. But Mrs. Solanka, our director of, of student services. So thank you all for being here. And of course, Sue Owen, who is our director of finance and operations, will, will play a major role in this. But I am going to just start the slideshow. And I actually will be taking turns kind of talking about these items as we go through. And I just want to show this, we've already had this voted on and approved. But we started the presentation with this because we want everyone to know who's watching and of course, the committee to know that everything we mentioned today ties into our strategic plans, which also have become our uh, budget priorities. All the compass, for the four compass points, teaching and learning, social emotional wellness, resources and of course, community engagement. You'll see that reflected in every single step uh, of this presentation. And I will turn it over. We're going to get into the nitty-gritty of that when we go through the different buildings. But I will turn it over to Sue Owen for the slide.
Thank you. Um, so just um, the beginning, you know, bringing in budget discussions. We put the, this, this slideshow's the background budget. We put the slide, this this slide shows the current budget is the twenty two million, two hundred and forty five. Um, to roll over our our contractual obligations is about least a hundred eighty four thousand, which is a little bit lower than last year, the last year, remember, was the first year of all our contracts where we knew, so there was a bump there. Um, we had an increase of charter broker funding um by about four hundred fifty eight thousand dollars, which does um hugely help us with offsetting the process of this question, these pledges. Um, the increase in special intuitions, um, forty six thousand doesn't seem like a lot, but we, there were several students who aged out. So there were several tuition that dropped off, um, which made the increase much smaller amount.
Ms. Sol, can you just explain what age doubt means in terms of special education?
Certainly. So we had a number of students who were students who were programmed to be receiving services up to the age of twenty two and their birthdays came up and they aged out of some of the significant placements that they were in. And you know, there are a certain number of students who may qualify for receiving services up to that birth date. And then when that birthday comes, that's when they age out. And so it's that varying times during a school year.
Now, I realize the committee probably knows that. I just thought that we're focusing on. I will move on. And obviously, if I just as a as a thought here, if we could just maybe shame a dial, hold questions till the end, just because there's a lot of sort of nitty gritty happening and just move things quicker. I'll let Sue turn it over.
Sure. So as a team, um, if you know, hearing everything, um, the community and what we're looking for, we um definitely put a lot of thought into to this side. So these are the staffing requests or other requests. Based on enrollment, we need to add a grade three teacher at the Deer Hill. Um, that's we've been upcoming, same grade, trying to keep the class size similar. Um, so we need to add the grade three. We would also add math specialists at Osgood halftime. We would like to add a preschool teacher and a preschool ESP. Um, because we actually have waiting list for our preschool, but we'll get in more detail um in the next few slides. We have a point five add of a math specialist at Deer Hill to kind of match the same thing at Osgood. A additional one point oh math teacher at the middle school. And an additional one final math teacher specialist at the high school. Looking to add a point five athletic trainer. A one point oh library ESP at the high school. And then based on studies in past years, we um, we need to add one more custodian to the middle high school. So you'll see this slide, we we kind of, we put in some options. Um, we got very creative this year, so you see this one says A at the top. Um, so we talked about redistributing the position from director of technology into running to be director of data curriculum evaluation. Um, no cost, it was budget neutral. We're looking to add a facility security for them, which is mainly could be an entry to respond to their needs to an existing person or staff member for about fifteen thousand dollars just to get while rolling. Uh, human resources slash payroll manager, again, um, increase of responsibilities. Continue the process of reducing full day K by adding fifty thousand dollars, which we weren't able to do last year. Um, fifty thousand decreases us by about two hundred dollars per family in tuition. And then the overall increase in supplies and materials um for all schools and including curriculum materials in the arts and math products were about two hundred seventy two thousand dollars. So the additional recommendations came in about a hundred and eighteen, eight hundred nineteen thousand dollars, um, the roll over cost. So the total request is an increase of eight and a half full-time equivalencies or staff members. And then the budget increase request would be for nine hundred two thousand, two hundred fifty seven dollars, um, bringing that up by a twenty thousand budget to twenty three million, two hundred forty seven dollars, seven hundred nine. Um, slide B. Everything's the same except we added in there, um, three lines down, make full day kindergarten free. So we put in the whole three hundred thousand dollars, which we would need rather than do it in phases. Let's just do it. Um, that 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 could be a possible.
Chapter seventy.
Could be a possible benefit, sorry, um, for doing that, which we can explain in the slides later. Um, so that would just bring up our increase um to one point one million or a five point one six percent increase. Um, still not a really big ask considering all the positions we're working on.
And this was, this was the version that was actually recommended by finance and facilities.
Correct.
So I will turn this, although I did speak about this position at the MCAS action plan presentation. Dr. Scollins, she she'll be working closely with me.
Um, so this position would really focus in a couple of main areas. Um, first, if we're looking at the people that they were working with, obviously myself, I'm the director of student services, principals and staff. So when looking at MCAS data and other data, we'll really be able to take a deeper dive into that and really help support how we can not only look at our MCAS data, but all our assessments and bring that together in a way that's easier to analyze and bring that down to a teacher level that's even more understandable. Um, and then also work around ensuring that they're working with teachers around curriculum and pedagogy and instructional practices and really getting in, because there's one of me. It's like principals do a lot of that work too, and our new special and math specialists. But having someone be able to support uh our initiatives, because if you look at our strategic plan, we do have a lot of things that we want to accomplish. And so that person would do that. And the other place that they would really also support principals would be in teacher evaluation. And one of the things about teacher evaluation is that it can really help support and drive your instruction and really move your curriculum because it's the conversations that you have. And so if we can have someone else supporting principals in being able to do some of the evaluations, that will allow those conversations to be had. Um, and really allow for a lot of work around goal setting and things that principals are already doing. This is not something new, we just be be able to support them and lift the load a little bit, which would allow us to have much better conversations with our with our teachers. So it's really a very much a position that would be really in the trenches, so to speak, really getting down with the teachers. And so I think it's a really, really thoughtful way to look at what we need to do in the future.
And to, to remind folks that this is a replacement of our director of technology um and digital learning. When we hired that position, the arrow was really pointing towards that. And as we've discussed recently, and we we've discussed as a leadership team, the arrow was really pointing in in this way, in in terms of being a more granular look at data, as Dar Scoll said, um, a more supportive model in evaluation uh and a more robust action plan oriented dive into curriculum. So so I really am very excited about the potential of this position to support folks at this table and also Dr. Scollins, the whole district. Taking teachers and driving construction, really want to drive it. So that's the first slide. And now I'm glad to turn it over to Mrs. Solanka.
So I am partnering with Principal Farrell on this request, and that is around expanding our pre-K program. We would like to add and integrate a preschool classroom. Our budget request is to add a teacher and one ESP. Um, what we really want to do is respond to and partner with the community. Our annual applications really do exceed our available slots. Um, this has been going on for several years. It creates wait lists. Um, it creates the 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 need for parents to be able to have to place their children in alternate private pre-K programs in and beyond our community. It would also foster the school community engagement by integrating families into cohesive public schools at an earlier age and really kind of build that pre-K through grade twelve trajectory earlier. And really would create an optimum teaching and learning environment experience for students because if we have students here in our pre-K, it's a very natural and smooth transition into our kindergarten program. Um, so the more that we um hear from our families that that is something they're interested in, the more we respond to that. Uh, we really would see this as a very good time for us to add to our pre-K programming by adding another full classroom.
Let me have the space.
And we do have the space. Um, this was another budget request. It was originally on our plan for the timeframe that we are talking about. However, thank you, it has already been achieved. We talked at the last meeting about moving this up into this year's budget. Um, we have this um posted and we have some responses to it. Um, the reasons that we really saw that we needed to do this was those numbers in grade six, due to increased initial evaluations, far exceeded the numbers in the other middle school grades that we really thought it was best practice to meet student needs, including but not limited to MCAS scores with a lower staff to student ratio. And what this will really do, which um I love, is it will enable us to continue building therapeutic programming for students and vertically align with the high school. We have a current high school special educator whose caseload really is one with a lens towards students with needs in the social, emotional and mental health area. Being able to um meet those students through that lens as opposed to through a lens of a specific learning disability is a different approach. And in being able to target that at the high school and then match that here at the middle school to vertically align that. Because this year we'll definitely be looking at that bubble group and that MCAS group in grade six who really need that um focus within this year through the addition of the teacher. But next year, being able to shift that to match what we are doing at the high school in terms of looking at that through a more therapeutic lens for one of the teachers and their caseload and their programming will continue to really build out our programming in meeting the needs of all of our students. So um, this this has already been achieved and 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 posted for this year, so thank you for that. But that that was an original budget request for next year and I just wanted to highlight that.
And we'll be sustaining it next year of the budget.
We will be, rolling it in another way.
Thank you. Now I turn it back to.
So for the central office or district wide request, um, district's in need of an addition of one final custodian from the middle and high school. Based on a study that was conducted seven years ago, it showed that the class of public schools was under staff based on split four each other's building versus the rest of the facilities we had. It was recommended at the time that we had three additional custodian staff on to middle high school. Today we've added two. So this will be the third addition. Um, this will have coverage as well, um, here at middle high school. The day shift is currently from six thirty to eleven thirty, we only have one custodian in both buildings. Um, which is an awful lot for one person to carry with these two different things going on. So this position would have a second day person to help cover both schools.
I just, could I add something to that?
Let's, okay.
It's just because of the custodian.
But let's let's hold questions at the end.
Um, the second request that was on the the list was the facilities law security coordinator. Um, this will be a secondary position which will increase an existing staff with responsibilities. This person would view in line to all the cameras during the school day. Um, this person would also walk into the school on a daily basis, check my doors when those security issues are just making a presence presence of the school. Um, and again, based on a recent study by a security firm, it was recommended that we have four staff members assigned, one to each building. Um, obviously, we can't fund all that all at once, so this is, this is a stat in our direction for us. And the human resources payroll manager, it's it's really a name change for bookkeeper. Um, this change will improve streamlining, the onboarding process for new staff. This is not typically a responsibility from the town hall. Um, it's just staff member will work with superintendent regarding personnel issues such as leave of absencees, FMLA, position changes, salary changes. And the staff member will also continue to process payroll, support transportation coordinator, manage the facility rentals, student activity funds, the math teacher time system reporting and perform many other duties in the business office. And the last one was the kindergarten. So we had two options, option one was intend to reduce the class of the full day K by adding fifty thousand dollars in the budget to offset the tuition. A decrease in tuition, be about two hundred per child. Um, this will bring tuition from thirty three hundred to thirty one hundred. Um, option two was just, let's just do it all in one shot. Let's add three hundred thousand to the budget to eliminate full day K tuition altogether. According to Destiny, and this is just newly, I just newly learned this, um, the district could be um eligible for additional chapter seventy eight in the second year, depending on the impact that coming these students would have on our aid eligibility. Um, we would need to fund the first year cost because the students would not be included in the comfortable day K for chapter seventy purposes until the fall of the year. Um, so I'm still doing some research to find out, you know, what the calculation is with chapter seventy, what percentage of that versus school year versus the town.
Yeah, and I do know there are other districts where they, their chapter seventy did actually reverse all of that in the second year. Uh, however, remember, our town also had, uh, gets some of our chapter seventies. It's not all dedicated in this, in Cohasset to the schools. Chapter seventy funding does, it is for the town, it's not just for the schools. Some towns do allocate it all to the schools, but we're not, we don't, not all do either, so it's, that's just how we've done it in Cohasset. And now I turn it over to, uh, who's first or last, to Principal Farrell.
So the Osgood priorities from a distance, fantastic.
You'll see all the priorities, they're tied into it, I believe, the standings.
Just continuing to support the social, emotional well-being of all the students at the Osgood to strengthen our, strengthen our cultural competency. Um, to continue to support co-teaching and inclusive practices, pre-K through two. To continue to implement the math curriculum and support grades K through two. To establish and evaluate assessments being used, particularly in kindergarten and first grade. What assessments are we using? How are we using them? And are there the best assessments to be using? And to keep up, uh, to continually upkeep the facility. Uh, we are the newest building in town, but even being the newest building in town, I think we're in our twenties, so we need to make sure that we maintain. And to increase the amount of tier two support in coaching in math. Uh, we'll probably lead on to the next slide, which is, nope, um, further down with priority for asking for a point five. Um, sorry, halftime math specialist data supporting the budget. Okay, uh, district strategic plan and student improvement plan. Big piece of the early education for any district is the social, emotional learning for the students and for the staff. Culture responsive teaching and school-based assessment data and MCAS data. You don't usually see MCAS data when you think about the Osgood, but we are um the building blocks to wherever we look at MCAS, whether it's third grade that, you know, poor, Mr. Sullivan always gets third grade MCAS questions and it starts earlier. It starts at kindergarten and or preschool. Um, so looking at what we have and what how we're leading our students to be strong by the time they get to D H O.
And you'll see this in um in many of the presentations, just to give you an overview of enrollment, but in this particular case, well, actually, it's, it's actually. Just let you see that.
Yep, just looking at the numbers, the kindergarten class that's in first grade right now, they're they're our largest size group. And they'll be moving into second grade. Uh, we will start kindergarten registration mid-January, so that in probably the end of February, the beginning of March, I can let you know how many students have already registered. We're going to do the same registration that we've done in the past where they sign up for, parents sign up, family members sign up for a time slot, they can in. Um, they register and then they will be, have some numbers as far as how many students we have coming in. I think looking at this, um, the town census, I think this is going to be another large year, but I'm pretty sure it will be. Um, and this is the one I was referring to before, increase the number of math support with an additional point five person. Um, I'd like to see this person working with the full-time math specialist to support, pull out and in-service in-class interventions in early numeracy. Um, kindergarten, Marsha Campell does an outstanding job. She is math queen as far as I'm concerned. She works with first and second grade. I'd love to see it. She coaches the teachers. I'd love to have a part-time person come in and start working with kindergarten, looking at our eye-ready um information that's coming in when you get to, especially now when we have it in January. We get that information. It'd be nice to have a math person that can work with kindergarten teachers and kindergarten students. But as it stands right now, this Campell is stretched very thin working with person session rate.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you.
Yes. So similar to AusGood, ooh, that is far away. I believe that reflects, again, the curricular goals in ELA, math, also the alignment of curriculum and assessment practices, grading, making sure we're giving appropriate feedback, the family and community engagement piece, our social, emotional learning. We're always informing our decisions based on the needs of our students, that comes through our MTSS model. And then kind of the cornerstone is our building itself, so making sure we have requests and things that were further in our school facilities.
And daughter's points for the nice graphic there.
Yep, so the history of that graphic, my daughter sketched it and Goodman Graphics then put it into a design for us.
And now I just took. I got so excited.
It was a T-shirt last year. Here is our current enrollment and then our projected enrollment for next year. And this drives our request, I believe on the next slide when we were looking at it, for really maintaining, oh, I guess. So that's the sense of our enrollment, which will factor in a little bit. And again, looking at our priorities, it's always, whether you look at it as a pie chart or some kind of a pyramid, that we're really driven by our district strategic plan, which then funnels into our school improvement plan. It also funnels into the professional development, how we support staff, how we further their goals. And then again, looking closely at who we are serving, our student population for our MTSS team, and are the data we collect from both our MCAS and our school-based assessments. All right, so our requests this year, we are similar to AusGood, looking to expand our math department with the addition of a point five math specialist. Separate from AusGood, we are fortunate enough at Deer Hill for the last couple of years to have had a point four math ESP. We have a full-time ESP splits her time. She's in the spent department for point six and then she supports our math. Our goal is to kind of create more layers of support that are increasingly targeted and then also are addressed by other professional qualifications and skills. So we have our full-time math specialist, Chrissy Donay, who I've met before, she was here last year, I know. And she really leads the charge, both from kind of backend kind of things, working with teachers, curriculum planning. She does pacing for teachers so they're on where they need to be. She does a lot of co-teaching in classrooms, she does do small group work, but it's much more embedded and it's a little bit of a teach-to-fish kind of model. It's her work with staff. She is very active in the math specialist community, which is very robust. She's often going to the job-like meetings and things like that. And she really keeps us at the cutting edge and in a really rigorous place. This new role would be kind of that intermediate place. This person would implement the targeted flexible pullout groups using the Bridges Math Intervention Program. So this is a program that is a beautiful companion to what's happening in the classrooms, but it's really based on the needs and driven by the data that we get from those assessments and things that are Bridges-based. That is the current role of the math ESP and she does an excellent job. However, I think having a math specialist will add a real layer of conceptual understanding, rigor, and targeted instruction.
It's important, sorry, just to make it clear to the committee that both positions now that have been brought to your attention are going to be certified math teachers. That's, so these are, these are going to be positions that we can be flexible with going forward. And that is also the case with the teachers that will.
Right. So it's like bringing another Chrissy caliber or Marsha caliber person into the mix. And then that, what that would create is an opportunity for the current math ESP to work really on more concrete data and skills-based work with students. So it can be very explicit, a student who's struggling with math facts, a student who's not understanding how to multiply fractions, and can be under, again, under the direction of Chrissy. And this other math specialist can provide very concrete instruction. And that gives us very valuable data and really sometimes helps in a lot of short-term interventions and really looking at an assessment, and here's a pocket of students that struggle with this concept and we're gonna go in and it's very concrete and we kind of fix it. The grade three teacher that we are requesting is in response to, you know, not only continuing the same class size that exists at AusGood, but also recognizing that it's a big transition to Deer Hill. It's a big leap in expectations and maintaining those, those class numbers in third grade I think will also support that idea of targeting instruction to students and really being able to know your student population intimately, address their needs. That, that ratio is always a really good thing. And so I think that's very important to, as we look for our third grade. And then just, this is more of a capital request with the progression of our building updates. Our hope was to tile our floors in one year. We got a little more last year and now, you know, someday we would love to have like all our floors look the same. It's been really amazing and people compliment them and, and, but we have a lot of a little jealousy in the hallways. Some classes is new tile and, and so just again, the progression of those kind of updates as we look to keep our building fresh. We're kind of a middle child in terms of our age, so we're holding up pretty well. But, you know, we want to keep us, give us a little TLC.
Thank you. Okay. Yep, thank you. To put a jump in, so the, among our school priorities, you know, the MTSS, which is the way we look at our whole instructional program. Tier one is a universal approach to make sure all students have high-quality learning opportunities. And then as needed, we'll focus in tier two and tier three. Is first out of the two priorities related to this budget, proposed addition. The second is making sure that all kids have the opportunity to have real personalized learning and support it as needed. So what we're asking for is the addition of a full-time certified math teacher to CMS's faculty in order to satisfy or to work to satisfy those priorities. As far as the data, you know, that around that is as we continue to, you know, refine our instructional program, one of the places we looked was MCAS and specifically our sixth-grade students have been over the last five years demonstrated the kind of growth that our students in our seventh and eighth grade math classes do on MCAS. And just, I'm sure you know, but I'll say to the community that when we talk about growth, like this chart is an achievement, it's not scores. It's growth and growth is really, can really be thought of as how much a student's performance has improved from one year to next relative to the students who scored the same way, you know, previously. So how have you grown compared to your peers? As far as explaining this, the middle school math curriculum frameworks, they're fundamentally different than the math in elementary, but they build on top of it. Once in the middle school, the math frameworks really spiral. So kids are exposed to things in sixth grade, they go to a greater depth in seventh and a greater depth in eighth, depending on the level. So it's not surprising as kids make that transition, they're a little behind. Once they, you know, get into seventh and eighth, they, they're able to access that curriculum more successfully. So we want, we're really focusing on our sixth-grade math students. So if we go to the next slide, one of the rationale that behind adding a math teacher is that the model would be that this person would be split and they would teach some of our math six classes, thereby reducing the, the average class size. The top row is, for instance, in our sixth-grade classes this year, we, the average class size is twenty-two students. With, if, if we had an additional person to teach two more sections, it would have been fifteen students. And I laid this out for each of the, the current, the students in current grade based on those numbers so that, for instance, if things stay fairly consistent that on a third, the current third grade, when they get into sixth grade, without the position, they'd be in a class that would probably be about twenty kids. If we're able to add this position, they'd be in a class of just about fifteen kids. And this really gives us the opportunity to offer more personalized instruction and, and help people grow. And then if we could just go to the next slide. The, as I said, part of this would be to help reduce class size and allow for more differentiated instruction. But then the other half of the position would be potentially would provide us the opportunity to create creative and flexible approaches to the curriculum. Now, in math, what we've done is, in, in math, we have a math teacher at each grade level, six, seven, and eight. We're fortunate to have a reading specialist, but we also have a fourth ELA teacher. And we built a model where that teacher teaches a couple of sections of our sixth-grade ELA. Class sizes are smaller, they're like that bottom row on the previous slide. And it allows ELA teachers to really work on writing, to really get to know students' strengths and know where to focus their instruction. Beyond that, the teacher, she has two sections of ELA, ELA six. She also teaches a grade six seminar course, which is focused on general academic skills, but with a focus on literacy that we're gonna continue to develop. It's a successful model and we'd like to be able to emulate it in math. So we've got the smaller class sizes, this position would allow us to run the smaller class sizes, but then also create a specific course that students would take as a special, like they do in sixth grade or in ELA, but they could potentially do in seventh and eighth around a piece of the curriculum that will sometimes math teachers struggle to get to because it's at the end of the year and it would just be, so, and it's a kind of standalone unit, statistics and probability. So we could potentially creatively schedule an opportunity for kids to experience the curriculum in a new, different way. So I feel like this would be something that would really support us and, and as I mentioned, we'll go through the bottom three bullets, but it really connects to the strategic plan as well. Thank you for considering it.
Thank you very much, Principal Scott, and we'll go through the details for attending.
Sure, we can get right into it. I won't necessarily repeat whatever was said, you know, all of the strategic priorities are aligned. Really what we're asking for is an increasing capital around three, three positions. So one is a math teacher and I think this person's gonna do a few things. One, I think there's a couple of programs that we can create or introduce. Two, improve some of the foundational math skills. So I'll echo what John said, that, you know, our entire instructional model is built on an MTSS framework. Unlike middle school math, the protocol you get in high school, the more specialized it becomes, the more abstract. And that doesn't mean you don't need the skills you used before, it means you're expected to have them in your toolbox, so. Be kind of reinforcing those. I do think it's gonna help us reduce some class sizes for some core courses. And we don't have a lot of math课, so I, I think if we can use this person to, looking at the projected enrollment to increase some of our business math offers. We have a few students who are interested in things like accounting, I think that's great, we have people who can teach it. If we can find the right person here, we can increase our computer science. I don't think we have enough interest to hire a full-time computer science person, but I think if we can get some people to teach some sections and start to increase things, that way we can gradually build it over time. The other one really is middle high school requests. Kathy Suri, who's our library media specialist, has asked for ESP, I think it's wonderful. You know, she teaches three classes, she does have some parent volunteers in the air for utility periods, which is really more supervisory, they do help and we have some students in who will help with some of the reading. But a lot of the administrative things take a lot of time. And when Noah talks about, you know, partnering with Safe Harbor, and I don't think he mentioned that he's one of the founders of that white-out stigma group, and, or Jack comes in and talks about the work that we're doing with CSCR or the work that we're doing in the science classes. That's all stuff that, that I would like to have Kathy be a real resource for, for those kids and push into some of the other classes and teach responsible researching and how to verify and vet information, you know, and sources and that type of stuff. And she does a great job of it. But the, the entity ESP would put us on par with other schools of our size when we combine the populations of the middle and high school. And then the third one is to increase the athletic trainer. Couple of reasons for this, that, one of the reasons, the MIAA last year said that all football away games need to be staffed by your own athletic trainer. So we are the most fortunate district in Massachusetts with Steve Butterick, he does a fantastic job. But it's a very tricky ask of the MIAA to basically abandon the teams that are home. And there have been some teams, not at our school, but at some schools in South Shore, that have run into problems with his injury and it's, it's tough to find an EMT. Not to say that a trainer could have necessarily solved the, the injury or solved the issue, but to have someone there on site who's got the expertise. In my experience, having someone there, there are sometimes more serious injuries than fans. You know, people who have heart failure and, you know, you need somebody who really knows what they're doing. So, you know, having people, having enough athletic training staff to deal with our teams and it just ensures the safety of everyone. So whether that is more Steve Butterick or two Steve Buttericks.
Echo everything Brian just said, the only piece that I would add to is in, to solve this problem, a lot of schools are going from the, previous model is athletic trainer might work in a health facility during the day. They come into the school in the afternoon and that's really why it's not a, a full-time position. And because of this need and to fill the void, a lot of schools, especially locally, have started to post for full-time, salaried, benefit-eligible athletic trainer positions. And what that's created is now, you know, halftime and Rockland's offering full-time, they're going. And it's just leaving a lot of schools with a, with a huge void of not having a trainer because they're going to better opportunities and it's created this competition amongst districts in the area. And some have just been left out without trainers for the entirety of seasons. And they, there's such a shortage on athletic trainers to begin with, they can't fill, they can't fill the need. So they've had to go solely to hiring EMTs when they can get them at a very high cost.
Our enrollment doesn't change too much. It's like five kids would spread over four grades.
Okay, and this is the concluding slide, just to talk about some of our future budget goals so that the committee is reminded about the direction we're pushing. The community understands that, you know, these are some of the, the asks that you'll be seeing in the future years. Obviously, if we determine later when we do vote on the budget that we're going to pay the three hundred thousand, would eliminate the paid kindergarten. I should say, we're one of just a few districts now in the Commonwealth that have any, any fee for our kindergarten. There is a small group. Long ago, we need to support social, emotional learning, we've staffed, we've increased social worker at the middle and high school. We are looking to, to do that in, in, in ways of the elementary school, it would be appropriate, but building of the therapeutic program certainly ties into that. And also, including as we get more refined with our MTSS system, we're going to be more refined with our MTS support needs. And you should see those in, in budget requests moving forward. Continue technology integration, I'll get it greatly forward in that, but that's gonna, that's gonna come with some capital needs. Exploring the implementation of elementary foreign language in the next coming years. The next, very, very soon, short future, you'll see some requests in that. You know, to really have a robust foreign language program, we, we need that. Continuing to build computer science pathway for students. Safety and security of the buildings, we've talked about that, that's gonna continue to be, play paramount in our goals and our requests. Cultural responsive teaching, diversity, equity, inclusion, resources for our staff, professional development. Also potentially positioning moving forward as we look at that and the needs. Expanding the arts and music offerings, we've talked about the need and the want to have more offerings, orchestra for instance. Increasing our staff to, to help the model provide more support in music and, and arts in that regard. We now have a, the outline of a, of very productive curriculum review cycle. With that, as we hit those intense curriculum reviews, needs are gonna come out of them. And we're gonna be wanting to support those needs, whether it's through resources or through positions or programs. Exploring the potential hiring of elementary assistant principals. You'll see our schools are, we have some, you know, we, we're a small district, but we- are, we have some, you know, we're a small district, but we have rather good-sized elementary schools. And schools of that size, many of them throughout the state, have elementary assistant principals more than don't, and that is something that, you know, we can certainly look at as we move forward and we want to. Expanding reading and math resources, K to 12, exploring the hiring of science specialists at the elementary level. We dabbled in that with some really healthy, productive embedded community with individuals able to provide that. To have that on staff would be really important. And expanding vocational innovation and project-based learning options, absolutely something we're pointing towards. And then our health and wellness, not just our offerings, but our facilities, making sure our facilities offer that, making sure our food services offer the best bang for the buck, so to speak, that we can offer out of that. So I've mentioned these before, but I certainly wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. And then the final slide here, which you have to really, this is like the last line on the eye chart. And, you know, obviously, we've shared this presentation, so you can look at it, but these are some of our thoughts moving forward in the next couple of years. This slide is important because it's really a dynamic slide. We talk as a leadership team at least three times a year, beginning of the summer, where we look at our needs, we look at the data that drive those needs, and then this workshop, which is really what this is, is also something we want to continue to do at this time in the budget process, or thereabouts, with the committee, before we vote on anything, to get your thoughts. And obviously, we're not voting today, this is just the first slice through the budget, but we wanted to bring these ideas to your attention. So with that, I will stop share of the presentation. Thank you for your patience in that, for your presentation, and we'll take any questions you have at this point.
So just to capture that for the committee, this isn't for vote, as Dr. Sullivan said at this time, but one of our key obligations as a committee is to approve the school budget. And so this gives us an insight as to what our administration is thinking that our school needs are, both currently for the coming up year and as you saw, the future needs. So I think right now, the next step would be taking feedback, also a subject, you can look at this, and then come forward with a formal proposal.
Yes, and in the budget calendar, do you happen to have that handy? We can, we'll find that before the end of the meeting, but it is, it's, there's a date for that, when we have a budget, we have a vote on the budget.
Yes, so we will vote on that, but this is to give us the chance to get initial reactions into the administration thoughts. So with that, there's a lot here, and I appreciate that one held your questions now, so I imagine there's a fire hose for you all. Before I, before I, before I do want to say how awesome it is to see like the white stuff, this is like that scene with the I'm not caring, we get the whole administration here, so it's a great visual. But with that, Mr. Carr, do you have any questions for administration on the budget workshop?
Thank you, this is excellent work. I learned a lot. So I'll ask one hard question, you do not have to answer today, you probably want to think about this, but, and this will not surprise you, municipal finance is one of the hardest things to negotiate, so we all have to really be together on what real needs are, and so we need to be able to advocate for that, it takes time to do that. So my question is, and however you want to kind of get back to us on this, is the organization that is $22 million, what can you do with that? What can you cut? What can you think differently about? I know you're going to have barriers to answering that, for instance, one barrier might be, if it's somebody, affects somebody's job, there's contracts in place, there's some things you can't go around, but I'd love to hear at some point when you're ready, what are the things that you can do without, or that you can do differently that may be a cost savings to the school department? It seems that that's probably a pretty good exercise to go through as well. And maybe you might just get some answers back. Are all of the requests that we heard from them incorporated in our total number in the original slide that Sue and Dan?
Yes.
Okay, are you all comfortable that we have in our master plan for the number? Okay, great. We had talked about this in the past, we're going to do some research to see about, for instance, the security monitoring, I think that's important, maybe there's some federal grants, it's a lot of homeland security money around, maybe there's some other way we can fund some of that, I think that's very important, all of you heard that. From all of you, so I think I've answered most of them. Oh, how much do we currently spend on materials? There's a line item, and everybody's thing was materials, supplies, sort of had a cute name in that, but you know, how much we spend currently?
Our salaries are a little over $18 million, the one is $22 million. Supplies and materials, which could be another one to install, yeah.
Okay, so they're asking, it's a total, I think, of like $300,000 or something to I choose.
Oh, the two seventy two? Well, this is a hundred, I think a hundred and fifty, that is certainly just curriculum resources.
So there's two, there's two types of ongoing activity?
Yeah, so we have our curriculum review process for math and for art. I put a placeholder around what could possibly be the expectation.
There's our operational costs, so we go through the exercise of having the principals, and actually, everyone here submits budgets, and we go through them from, obviously, the bigger blocks are positions, but we also look at materials. However, now that we have a thoughtful and strategic curriculum review cycle, we will never be in a place again where we need two major curricula like we did at the elementary level. A total revision of our math program, absolute adoption.
That's correct.
So, but I think the, that 200 and something number.
Includes a big thing for ongoing.
It does.
That includes math. Middle school and high school math.
Okay. Great. It just poses one of the things that somebody's going to give us with the question. I just want to make sure we have answers. Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Mr. Carey, for yours.
Yeah, well, I'd like to first speak of, like, the district needs, different needs from each school. One, we need a custodian, something that we can kind of kick in the can for, like, four years ago, I hired a full-time custodian, that's something that we kind of promised when I first got on, you talked about that, I was there for that, and the study that they did do, so we're definitely not as clean as we'd like to be, so I want to talk about that, to see how important that is, that role. Also, too, as we talk about human resources department, I think it's a great idea to try to put something in place, because I think it's really important that we have, you know, Dr. Sullivan's time is very important to us, so him spending those times to try to be the human resources and everything into one really takes away from what we're trying to do. So I just want to emphasize that's something I've been talking about for years, about how important the human resources department is, because as Sue spoke to when she was first, and me myself, as a member, weren't given any information, we as what, you know, so there's a definite need for that. You know, and I also want to thank the staff for stepping up and being all the human resources. So with that said, I think that's a huge, kindergarten, I can't say enough on how we need to do this part of our program, because, you know, I often say, you know, you go to COASIT, all right, we made it, great, here's the, like, wait a minute, let's see, if I'm popping the property taxes, this is 40% of the property tax, 30% depending on, so I think that's a huge deficit for a struggling family that has to come to COASIT, spend over $1 million, get it $800,000, 7%. So this is kind of a no-brainer, this is something that we need to participate with, and if this, if we can do it this year, I would think, and using the chapter seven money as well, is to try to find ways, and Sue, thank you for looking out for that. I am happy to see that everybody has added facilities as part of your programs, especially here in Owens School. You think, oh, it's good, oh, it's great, it's still 20 years old, it's going to be removed, and anybody who bought a new house knows, 15, 20 years, everything starts to go, so. That's really the reality. And I also want to speak to that as a school facilities committee, we met last night, and we broke down what we received for the report that was sent out, so that's going to be divided into subcommittees for each one of your schools, to try to see those kind of fundings that we can get as a committee, to try to adapt that to the town. So there is a whole facilities committee working on your particular schools, specifically for, you know, I think a lot of that was based on middle high school, we're all getting from middle high school, and a lot of, a lot of work that was spent on that, however, we did not oversee some of the old little links, so to bring that is big, and I appreciate that. And I also just wanted to emphasize on how it's important, and I want to thank the district, because, you know, we did have parents in here talking about the forecast scores, and as a district, we came up to plan, you guys implemented that plan in this proposal, I think this is the data has shown that our forecast scores are down, so this is our opportunity to basically get those scores up with the human capital, and I think this is trying to show, taking your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Listen.
I just want to voice my support for any solution that will lower the teacher-student ratio, I believe, Mr. Mill seeing the lower class size projections or that possibility, that's a life-changing in a math class, and in any class, every single human is benefiting from having fewer students in the classroom, so I think everything we can do to push for that to happen is going to be really important. I think it, you know, having all of these forecast conversations and thinking about students with special needs, students who are developing typically, every single person's going to win from that model, just a good solution. So we can do that. Want to make, also, I'm in full support of free kindergarten, feels crazy that people still pay for kindergarten here. With the preschool, is it a full class size that could be added to that?
So we would add an additional other class of preschool that would mirror the one that currently goes in. So be morning and afternoon, yes.
Awesome. People will be so excited to get that letter.
Right, have a waitlist of about eight to 10 for the four-year-olds, and usually around 15 or more for the three-year-olds, so we could add another, another class that will really reduce that.
And then like you said, using that transition, the kids are already there, they know what Oxford looks like and feels like, and they just have a easier segue to kindergarten.
A lot more students coming from outside preschool, so it's not just Brown Bear or South Shore, um, Community Center, we've got Hingham, we've got Boston, there's just a lot of preschools, one or two students coming, that's really hard when you're four years old and you're coming to a new environment and there's only one of you.
Yeah.
So if we did, how's more here?
I just think that would be terrific, it'd be awesome for the families who are trying to get in, to be able to actually get in. Yeah. I guess I don't really make questions, I'm just in support of all of, everything you want, I wanted to, let's spend the money.
It's like Christmas.
Basically, yeah, I feel very generous with money.
Sounds, thank you, your remarks are, as always, when you're back, I think a teacher is really helpful. I'd like to ask you, Mr. McClellan. A starting person, district-wide expenses, setting a few questions relative to those. First, HR director, stipended position, looks like it's $10,000 stipend for that.
It's an increase, increase in an existing person's salary.
Okay, so, oh, so it's not a salary, so it's just an increase to annual salary?
Yes.
Okay. And we feel that $10,000 is adequate for the, I'm guessing this Ballard is, is?
That would be, that's the idea. Yeah, she's still.
She's an integral part of the central office. So we feel that is $10,000 is adequate, or?
We do, yeah, we do, we think, you know, we were ready, I mean, not to talk about her personal salary, but we do, we do believe that's a good amount for that service.
Okay, I just, yeah, I just want to make sure, because obviously, there's a need for it, right, and if we're going to be relying on her more, I want to retain assets in the district that are valuable to us, and she is very valuable to us.
She sure is.
So as long as we feel that way, I just want to confirm that's going to be enough. And then the curriculum director, director of data analysis, however, whatever the time is there.
David Crick.
Okay, maybe it makes sense, it's a good idea, discussed it privately, we can put up the idea. I just want to make sure that, I guess the job hopefully hasn't been developed yet.
No.
So I just a suggestion to be extremely explicit in what the expectations are for the positions, that we're not getting someone in here that is, you know, surprised in any way about, you know, the depth in which we want them to evaluate data can be, you know, that's not for everyone.
And we'll develop that as a team, too, I guess something.
For sure, I'm not suggesting that school community card, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just making sure that, you know.
No, I didn't mean that either, I just, should we get a lot of voice?
Just because it seems like it's a, you know, I don't, I don't know, what, it seems like an attractive position, especially someone who might want to become like a superintendent or superintendent one day, but, you know, I just want to make sure that we're developing a candidate pool that is going to give us a good sort of, an area of candidates, if you will, you know, that this, someone, and they're all going to be interested in their expectations, they're going to be managed in terms of what the job is, because it's going to be important, it's going to be an important way to relieve some of the pressure that is on Dr. Scollins and our building principals, and this is like really, really burdensome work, and so, and it'll handle three of our assets for two other things, which is going to be, it's really, I think, a very good idea, but just want to make sure that when we do get the person, they know what they need to do, and they're not only qualified, but also prepared for that.
Correct, yeah, and I think to your point, I think you were starting to talk about that data piece, and that's a very specific.
Right, right.
Skill set to have, and so we would be very explicit about that.
Okay, that was one of the questions I had around data, I just, district-wide expenses, the only question I have for, well, first, generally speaking, thank you all for your presentations, and I'll point out that it's obviously very responsive to some of the discussions we've been having in this room, especially around math, that seems to be a uniform, you know, area of improvement on the building, so thank you, and certainly it's not somewhere we need to improve. The, and all the suggestions, I think makes sense, especially I had, you know, a question about library ESP at first, but Scott, you mentioned those in your presentation, I think makes sense, given what you said, as well as the trainer position between you and yourself and superintendent, I think it doesn't make sense. Principal Sullivan, my only question around the building-specific expenses for you, the third grade teacher certainly is going to be needed, is it needed for 23, 24, or 24, 25? And the reason I ask this is that bubble doesn't seem to be coming your way until those second graders graduate from Oxford next year. And I'm wondering if we don't incorporate that, so, you know, preface this with, I agree that we need the position, so I agree with you. But might we allocate that, I think we said $66,000 is about, towards an additional 1.0 special education teacher at Deer Hill this year? Because I think, given my exposure to conversation with CPACs and discussion with this room, I think that one of the major shortcomings we have in terms of special education are our resources, that's limiting us in ways that perhaps we don't even realize. So I'm wondering if we shouldn't allocate this year's request to a special, full-time special education teacher, keep all the other requests you have in place, and they make sense, and again, third grade makes sense, but maybe for next year, then we just, then we just ask for that next year when we are going to need it, because you're only going from, I think it's like a 107 incoming or something, after next year, that 120, whatever it is, 126, or it's a 6, oh, yeah, that's not coming until 24, 25 at Deer Hill. So what do you think about that?
So I definitely, you know, I hear where you're coming from. The, I, I think that some of it is about maintaining the number of classes we have, so there are six second grades currently at Oxford. And the last year that we telescoped from six to five is the class that is currently in sixth grade. So we, so we telescoped them from six to five as third graders.
You know what I mean, six, six teachers.
Down to five, and then COVID hit, and then in fourth grade, we increased them back up to six, and so I think because we saw that, that benefit, and then, so I just think that, I don't know, I just, I, I hear, and then also in terms of the special education teacher, I do want Barbara to weigh in, but we did increase. but we, we did increase a special education teacher this year.
Yeah, I could piggyback on that.
No, full-time.
No, we have an additional special educator who is specifically in the area of being a reading specialist at the Deer Hill School. So there is an additional person there already this year that we are looking at in terms of, you know, what are we going to get in terms of maximum benefit? We're watching that expand this year. In addition to that, whenever we look at the special education students, we look at those bubble classes. We're not seeing that right now coming up from the Osgood in terms of, you know, a great number of increase from grade two and grade three for the Deer Hill for next year. And if we increase this person in terms of a general education teacher at the Deer Hill, that will help in some of our MTSS work and some of those supports that we would give to students in terms of in general education. I'm not saying, you know, oh no, we wouldn't look at that. I'm just saying that what we're looking at in terms of data points and trajectories is we're just looking at it in a different, maybe different end of the telescope, if you will.
So we still have five special education teachers and you have three. So I feel like we're very well supported.
I'd like to say that the class, if you look specifically at that second grade class we have right now, going into third grade, they are doing well with the number of students in their classes at six. If you look at the age of those students, they were in kindergarten when COVID hit. And we are, I don't want to say playing catch-up, but we are playing catch-up to their social emotional needs, their reading needs. Depending on what grade you are, when COVID hit, when you were, it affected you differently. But you're looking at your second, my second grade right now, they missed or they didn't get full coverage of their literacy skills or their math skills because they were at home for kindergarten during that time period. And in first grade, they were in their cohorts. So in support of keeping the third, the new third grade teacher, I do support, you know, whatever it's worth. I do support that we have our second grade students. Third grade transition is a huge transition. It's almost as big, and I think we hear about it as much, as fifth going to sixth. They have, just, I'll just do this real slightly. They have lockers to get used to. They have other specialists to get used to. They're more on their own. And I will openly say that our second graders right now still have their hands held very tightly as they move up the school. For any of you that have second graders, you know that.
Okay. So are you saying that they would have to, the current second graders would have to step, step down in terms of number of teachers next year?
Yes. So right now we are five, five, five.
It seems to cover both sides of the class that's there and what's coming in.
So we talked about this last year.
It's because they're not used to the.
Last year, we made, we knew the bubble was actually one year behind.
For second grade.
Yeah. So we knew that we had a second grade teacher, but we did that because of the needs. We felt like we wanted, because we know that going, and then obviously the kindergarten, you know, the, the classes that are behind that are big. And so we knew that we wanted to support this group because even though the numbers weren't crazy, if we went with five, their needs were really profound because of COVID and the, what they went through. We knew we were going to need to support them. So that's, and actually, this is a good, this is a really great discussion. This is what the workshop's supposed to do. I think you're supposed to get these back and forths because it's not like one is not important. Both of them are very important. It's just a matter of, that's the model that we bought in at Osgood is we wanted to support the second grade when they got there because we knew they were going to have a need, knowing that the numbers weren't going to be crazy in third grade with five either when we move it a year ahead. But the needs are still there. But we were going to reassess and look at those needs. And this is what we came up with. They're still there.
No, so I agree with you. I guess my fundamental misunderstanding was that I was thinking that, so there are currently five third grade teachers and there are six second grade. I thought that we had the same, we were allocated the same resources. We have the same class size. So I was wondering why we suddenly.
Oh, that big of a.
So that's, so there's no sense why we do that. So we keep that level of support or, okay.
Right. And just as like a little like future, like foreshadowing, right now they're six, six, six. And we're five, five, five.
Okay.
So this is something.
You're going to keep on making that request?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Okay. Now can we, just back to the special ed issue. You said, Principal Solomon, you said you had five 1.0s at Deer Hill, one of which is the newly hired position.
Yes.
That specializes only in reading.
Yes.
What, so how many, okay, so does that individual take on, probably not, right? A regular caseload because she specializes in only certain, so what is, what is the current caseload of the special ed teachers?
It varies year by year. Like the bubble that went up to John's group was incredibly large. I think it was almost 20, like 20, 22. Well, no, I think number, I was thinking, well, it's a hundred kids. So, yeah. So around 20 kids, 28%. Right now, the fifth grade is significantly smaller. I think it's more than 10%. So it just really varies year by year. So I think right now we're looking in around the 10 to 14% range, I would say, per grade level. And from that, that specialized reading teacher is pulling. Now, sometimes she's got students that she works with, just depends on the nature of their IEPs. Sometimes she's sharing the responsibilities with the grade levels to that teacher. For example, if the student has a math goal, that would not be something she would be addressing. And so then the, the grade level special teacher will address that.
So she's more that hot for them.
Right now the grade. Very, and a very targeted kind of literacy as well.
So right now the grade level special education teachers at the Deer Hill, their, their numbers are much lower than the fifth grade that we saw. In addition to which, we have a specialized, special education reading specialist teacher who secens some students off of each of them to provide some of the reading services that in the past they had to provide.
Okay. Do we know if Principal Farrell's given school, what he's looking at is for the special education? Did I imagine lower because we haven't identified as many yet?
Not necessarily. I was just going to say, it depends if you're looking in September, the number's lower. But then you're looking when, as we are right now, January, February, March, our numbers increase because of the testing and the need.
What do you think, Principal Farrell, if you know, or maybe Mr. Walker knows? What is, what is the percentage number approximately?
I don't know what the percentage number is, but I do know that looking at the long range, we were looking at kindergarten getting a full, a full special education teacher just themselves. So we have a special education teacher that does second grade and kindergarten. We have one that does first grade and then we have a specialized program. So as the, the year progresses, we do get more students. But I know as we're looking at that chart, that I believe I'm correct.
Yes.
As we're looking at the chart, we are looking at possibly next year, asking for someone so that grade two would have their own person, grade one and kindergarten. But right now, one person does K1, K2.
No, K1.
K1, yeah.
Okay. So what?
So what we've done is we're looking at adding an integrated pre-K next year. And then perhaps a year after that, we would be adding a special education K. And then we would have three at the Osgood that would be for each of the K1 and two grades, which we don't currently have, in addition to a program teacher and our two pre-K classrooms.
Okay. What do we feel, and I'm interested in hearing what, what do we feel is the optimal sort of caseload for special education, grade level special education teacher? So if they're not feeling overwhelmed, that we feel that we have grown within it without anyone feeling that it's going to stress them too much, stress them too thin? What do we, what do we think? Is that 10 to 15 range strong?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Sanon, do you concur with that?
When we start getting over that, we start giving a real pinch of service.
Okay.
Yeah. I think there's a really easy-to-make argument for having a special ed teacher attached to a grade level as well, right? Like just where you're thinking of, where kids are, what schedules look like. Trying to share a grade level can be very difficult. So needs change and curriculum becomes more complex. So it's, I think it makes a lot of sense to have a person attached to each grade level. I think it's hard to say what caseload is comfortable because every IEP is different. Right? And every year is different and it's, it's hard to put a number on that. But, but being grade level specific fields. And when I think of Deer Hill, where I feel so fortunate is we have the grade level specific and then the specialized reading, it works almost like a pressure valve. It just, it does, it just spreads it in a way that just feels like, I feel very good about our special education coverage in terms of our staffing. And my hope would be not for Deer Hill, but I think that Osgood would be next in line to increase their staffing.
That makes sense, given what you said. I didn't realize that. Where's the fifth out?
That's our specialized program, our ILC.
Okay. And you mentioned you have one of those as well.
The Stars Program. The Special, right.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you. Mr. Allen, you've.
Oh, I just wanted to support the argument that the current second grade, like globally, is a major concern, especially from an interventionist perspective, when we look at benchmarking. So last, they were in first grade last year, obviously. In my school, we had to double up on our intervention periods for that grade level. So you don't really learn to read on Zoom. It just doesn't work, right? So like, we're trying to catch up for that. And so kids who are still in need of intervention level support or just tier one support in that grade, there's just so much that's just across the board, like how to be a student, how to share, how to read, how to do math, all, everything that you learn in kindergarten couldn't happen at a comprehensive level for those kids. And so it's just such a whole student project for that grade. So like anything we can do to keep any numbers down for them, to have classrooms that are, you know, the teacher's going to be able to have that much more time with each child, I think is going to be really important.
That makes complete sense.
Yeah. No, yeah. And that's, that was my few minutes ago.
Grade two that I supported. Yeah. No, I mean, as Dr. Solomon articulated, that's what we supported last year. I completely agree. I had a general misunderstanding.
Totally.
So I have eight questions, comments. Not all of them need to be responded to today. Some of them are just comments as we, for when we actually consider the budget, the bolster the points. And so on. What was our increase? We had a budget request last year. What was the increase last year? And then what was the increase this year? And again, we don't say you go to that number now, but that's what the committee will tell.
Last year, last year's finalized budget or asked?
Asked finalized and then versus what we're asking for now.
The work about was disappointing compared to what we.
Yes.
Yeah.
We can come back to that, but that's, that's a number. Maybe actually if you want to circle back with the committee after the meeting.
Yeah, I actually just, I don't want to speak up. I could guess, but I would actually find it.
Ms. Owen, custodian, there's a request in there for a new custodian and Mr. Tandy's in much support. The explanation was based on a study. One of the things that I want to know is are there needs that we have at the buildings that are not being met because of custodian staff? So are things not getting done because we have one person at, on the 632, 11, 500, we have one person for both buildings? Are there things that we're not doing, things that are not getting done, tasks that are not getting attended to because we haven't staffed? So in other words, I'm less worried about what the study says and more worried about the reality of the ground. Again, you don't have to answer it now, but that's something that, that we have to, well. On the HR payroll, this may be, Mr. McCollum may have asked this question. You call it a name change from bookkeepers, that's a $10,000 increase responsibilities and adding a new player. I will trust your judgment on that. On the kindergarten front, one thing that we absolutely nailed down, choosing between A and B, is that clarity on the chapter 78. You know, everything, super nuts how that works, what part goes to the town? Because part of that is going to be pitching this to the town, saying, hey, you give us 300 grand now, you'll get 300 grand later or 270 or, you know, maybe we'll split it. I don't know. We need to have, we need to have visibility of what that looks like. Principal Mills, there was a slide on there, a great slide, by the way, on how does the, how the grades, adding a grade six teacher would reduce class sizes going forward. But I saw on the slide, it looked like it could reduce class sizes for grade seven and eight now as well.
It had, it would have been the difference had we had it.
Had, that was hypothetical. So it's not, there's, there's a resource sharing that would lower those class sizes.
And it's, it's one of those pieces that there's no regret. I think the timing would be right to add this position when you look the, the current seventh and current eighth, they had class sizes that were under 20, average class sizes. So I feel like the timing going forward, it's critical. We didn't miss anything by not doing this previously.
One thing in your remarks you talked about for supporting the math teacher is bringing some of the later curriculum forward, notably statistics and probability.
Yeah.
I just want to note, and I'm out of line here because I'm actually with a bunch of educators, but in my life, the thing that I see most people not get right that they should is statistics and probability. And so I think that's this under important, like you won't realize how important that is. So if there's another thing like fractions, we can stick at the end and bring statistics.
No.
Well, you have fractions and decimals and I wanted to.
I always take, my son Grace is doing fractions now and so on. But yeah, it just, that's something I think about is very, that's, that's very important to me. So Principal Scott, your math teacher request, you gave some color to the idea of business math. It just goes into our discussion at the committee level on practical learning. I love that. The other thing that I don't know if this could be a role of that or this could help, I would love to see more emphasis on also, you know, personal finance. You know, how interest rate works, how loans work, how mortgage works.
We do a course on that. We have personal finance, we have statistics, we have economics. We're looking at accounting. Kids are interested in marketing. We have an investment club. So those would be things we'll be looking at down the road.
And so if this could, if this could help underscore those, those efforts, I think that's great. Because again, in my life, one of the anxieties people have trouble with is not really knowing what it means to have a credit card. Not really know what it means to have a HELOC, all these things that.
And if I can make a public pitch for the credit for life, that's what that whole.
There you go.
Still looking at the whole.
And then two other points that you're asked that I just would like to see a little more on. The library ESP, I think you could give a good case for that, but really bringing to light exactly what specific things we could add. And then the athletic trainer. I get the idea that there's a requirement on having people go with the mortgage. But what does that mean? If there's option A, we do nothing, what does that cost the district? Option B, we get someone, what does that cost the district? Understand the competitive pressures and so on. So that's it. I think those are my eight comments questions, most of them before, or later. I will close with my remarks with a comment. I do a lot with people who, their job is to do exactly what you did here. And you guys are in the top notch and you're professional educators and school administrators. And so I just want to say this is a fantastic presentation, well thought out and reacting to what the committee has talked about for needs. You're, you're nailing the math. Everyone, you math, math, math. This is, this is phenomenal. So I think I am very pleased with this, with this plan. I think the committee will be as well. So thank you very much for, for all your work here. I was putting this together. It was an excellent presentation. A lot of people applaud and look forward to seeing it as it develops. So anything further from the committee?
I can answer one more question. On the one of the eight, so last question originally we had asked for 5.85%, which is around 2.2 million. We ended up with 3.05, which was about 660,000. It's almost.
And this year was more something?
This year's.
Two options.
This year options 24 point something, 10 point something. And then if we have the full kindergarten in there, it's 5.05.
So it's. Oh, this is the wrong year, isn't it?
That's last year.
That was last year's? I'm not sure what that presentation is. Forget, forget it. So.
Do we think it's necessary to have the principals here at this party?
No, no, I'm happy that you guys are ready to, thank you for coming.
No, thank you. You should, anything else for us?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you sure?
I'm sure.
Sorry, Alan.
Bye, everyone. Thank you.
Bye. Thank you.
4.01.
Lance, I do.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah. So if we.
I'll just be quick. Steve, you're welcome to stay if you like it as a public meeting. Don't. Just be quick, Steve, you're welcome to stay if you'd like. It is a public meeting. Don't be required to. So, uh, I would leave if I were you.
Be wrestling in the gym, I'm gonna go check on that.
You're wrestling in here too, we'll be here.
Sit the mat.
So Lance, Lance, here's your answer. So it's a four point zero four percent increase. If we did fifty thousand dollars for the kindergarten tuition, and then it would be five point one six percent. All right, if we did the full. And then the question about the custodians, I mean, so right now, let's see. For one, for one custodian to cover two buildings for that many hours is, it's a lot. Um, so if there are two things going on at once. Only one gets up. Um, if there's, if they're in, um, and it starts to storm or something, then one person here to start up there putting. Your, your ice melt and shovel line before the rest of them get here.
So I, I guess what I would put it is, and Mr. Carr said it, great, municipal finance is very, very hard. Uh, so. In that we can tell the story of the need, you know, with, on October third, we couldn't do this because we only have one person. You know, we, the trash is piling up because it's only, it only even cleared on two Thursdays, you know, these sorts of specifics.
Well, we have a, that's true. We also have a, we have a very comprehensive uh, study that was done on our needs.
Yeah, well, I, I, I react more to actual needs on the ground.
Definitely.
Anecdotal evidence, I just think it's schooled so often, it's like, everything seems to be going well, and then a toilet overflows and all of the energy is there. And then there's everything else still needs to be taken care of. Right? Like it's just those X factors.
And she's kind of doing that, right? And then we have someone else that's had an accident.
Right. Someone throws up, forget it.
I do wanna, I do wanna try and keep us on tech, we're a little bit behind schedule and we have a, a, a health executive session. As you know, as I see here, here, we're gonna try and get through uh, the agenda items to where uh, where, where you are as quickly as we can. I think that covers budget workshop and that preliminary fiscal twenty four budget, is that correct?
That, um, well, no.
No, this is not a vote.
There's an asterisk.
That's, that's next.
Up to the capital. So, um, we, your budget worksheet, want me to share that?
Uh, you could preliminary, preliminary fiscal year.
Finance update.
Yeah, is that coming up?
It's not actually on the agenda. Is that, is that preliminary FY twenty four budget? Okay.
Let me share that document.
Let's do that. That's this thing.
Yes, yeah, I, I can make a very quick, this is, this not a lot changes. The finance update for the month of November. We have forty one percent through the year, the school budget is thirty eight point nine seven percent expended, so. We're a little bit ahead of the game there. We've accumulated all supplies, materials. Things are on purchase orders, the tuition has not changed. We did um, have one school move from a. Private to private, which was reported last month. So we're still at the negative seventy four thousand dollars that has not changed. Um, and then I give you just updates of each school. Um, again, I guess it was forty one percent through the year, each school is. In thirty four, we can do twenty nine, twenty nine percent of the school, so we're, we're still ahead, ahead of the game and always better. Second breaker, um, as I mentioned, we're, we're speeding, um, a big, big jump this year. We went from seven hundred and one thousand to one point one million. Um, that one point one million will be carried to definitely twenty four, which you saw, we got a four hundred eighty four thousand dollar increase, which will. Balance on which for next year. Um, so that, that was a big help. That was, you know, thanks to. Ms. Walker and her, her admin, they pretty much worked with Desi and, and tried to claim and pinch every minute and every hour of every service. Um, and it, and it paid off for us. Uh, our capital for this current year, everything's been completed. Um, Deer Hill is the only one that's left to purchase some criteria. And then, um, briefly here, which this report was done for the updated capital, so this is what. The month of November, our capital request was in our prioritized list. We should just add something to this, um, which is next on the agenda.
Yes.
Um, and again, it says we need us four hundred thousand dollars, we're waiting to see, it would end up being two transit grants, um, and actually these prices definitely less than. And then that grant, um, we're coming to the end of our S R grants, we only have twenty seven thousand dollars left in our S R, our final S R grant. Um, and then we will have more S R grants going forward unless. Then we would have a different. Um, so you can see, well, we have us, um, four three straight grants, we have a title, a title, um, one, and then on that grant. We've already, um. The only area still topic of discussion is schools and facilities were minus fifteen dollar dollars. Um, so much charging at the end of these, some, some, um, that some sort of discussion we had about finance side committee meeting. Um, we, we have, you know, one gift, it says that two are rated up. Instead of ten dollars per child, so the C M rate, we're recommending twenty dollars per child, C M rate. And one, it's not, not even over that. Um, so we haven't made any final recommendations on that yet, we're just discussing it by facilities. Um, again, we've got the union headcount based on regular offices, just to give everybody information.
And we have these materials. Is there any thing that like points off specifically?
Let's see. So just big, big ticket items is, you know, group service. Is going in, coming from third. Will be delivered in, but something that Frank they'll have the serving line and they will have their a la carte slash snack room. Um, vending machine is a big hit, it's filling out almost on a daily basis, the most part. Um, transportation, we're just completed a four year lease for our eight new school buses. Um, currently, eight buses is about a hundred and fifty one thousand, um, over the course of four years. Um, in the worst case, you have thirty hundred buses, um, same time, so it's not changing. Fortunately, we would render that a lucky bus, so we'll have one nice bus coming in, which will be the out of route. We'll pick up some of our field trips, athletic trips. Our track is complete, our alumni field turf is being installed. Um, they've done quite a bit of work on it, they rolled out all the turf. We'll just wait for temperatures to be close to forty so they can cool, um, cool it down. So, I mean, yesterday we are. They can look at it sometime next week and talk about whether it's forty, so they're gonna grab every chance they can get, um, to complete that. Um, worst case scenario, he said it'd be maybe a week or two, um, in spring, but they don't think so, they think we're gonna have. Um, nowhere is concerned, some of the other things that are, um, going on. Um, just over three guys, Daniel, Daniel lighting, a la carte lighting is being replaced in the building, um, so that, that will happen. The, uh, if they finish the time at Oxford, then we'll be moving on to Deer Hills to continue that. Um, the air purifier, all the filters will be changed on the break. Doors are gonna be scrubbed, um, the Deer Hill chip four will be redone, but here it's very slippery right now. There's lots of things going on, I think there's painting. I have a list. That's it. Now, I don't think anything else, um, since I get into some scrubbing, stripping, stripping and waxing of the hallway, I might lose signs left. Because we cut that so close, we can't see the way to do that. Um, so there's just a lot of, a lot of objects going on right now.
Any questions on the budget? Now we'll turn it over to, um, the next agenda item, which is, and actually we can point to. The draft capital funds on fiscal year twenty four. Uh, as we heard earlier, there's a proposal on, um. Uh, concerning our plan, concerning the upgraded door replacement, refurbished fitness center. We're estimating costs of that over three to five years, getting ninety thousand dollars. Um, there is some capacity to absorb that, as I understand it, it's only going to be revolving. But the balance of that hundred fifty thousand dollars remains unfunded at this point. And so, um.
So I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, can't hear what you're saying.
One of the questions for the committee is whether or not we would want to amend our capital fund request. For fiscal year twenty four to include. The fitness center as an additional item, and if so, where are the priorities, or as a replacement item for something else, and if so, will we replace? So that is a pathway to funding this, or at least requesting funding. I know it comes with some downside, potential delays. But, um, I'm, I'm wary of us, um, taking, setting up for the path where we, where we are. Buying a hundred million dollar funded commitment of the part of the schools, uh, without going through our normal, uh, capital process and discussion. So. I guess I'll pause there and we'll see if there are thoughts.
Okay, I just have a clarifying question. So. From what I understood, there's fifty thousand in the revolving fund that could cover the first year. Of lease, correct? Does that have to be paid back? I will stop looking at you now. Does that have to be paid back to the revolving fund? No, so that's just, that's just available.
Right.
So it will be four years that we'd be asking for, for coverage, right? Not five years?
Yes.
I just want to make sure we're asking for the right thing.
I think he's very confident, um, we've had a point of this discussion about it. So the athletic revolving fund the first year. Not sure if it's the same that for four more years. He's quite confident between fundraising and donations and he can generate. The additional hundred fifty thousand dollars in less than that five year term.
But, but it's not, it's not certain.
Sure.
But I guess my question is, if it's a five year lease and we can cover one year of it, then we're not really asking for help for five years, we're asking for help for four years. So should we, if we get to the point where we ask, it should be asked correctly because they are very serious about their specific. Asks, right, right? Unless we want to ask for the five years to recover and not use the fifty thousand from our revolving fund.
Yeah, those, these are the options.
Yeah.
Um, and that's, that's why what it happens, because that's, that is an option to use the fifty thousand now and then.
Then get help in the future for you.
Yes. Which would be the balance of around fifty, right?
Right, so.
So, yes.
I would be inclined to add it to our list, as opposed to taking.
Any other thoughts?
I mean, when we're delayed, it's gonna take. What are you thinking there? Can we qualify for CPC money for this, under recreation?
I, I also don't know.
Okay. Why don't we call it Hispanic?
I was gonna say outside.
Inside, it's inside. I don't know if you, like the field was outside, but it's worth asking.
And also too, when we were talking about the revolving accounts. Is there, I mean, is there accounts in here that are stagnant, like forever? Like we have twenty nine thousand. An hour account for gifts, like, do we have like specifically, and soon I'm trying to work on this, let's try to earmark where all of this is. Because you're talking about this one point two here. And to be honest, there was a lot more money in athletics revolving account here, like two hundred thousand. So I know we, I don't know where that money went, but I'm sure to. Fund the school, however, that would have funned fitness. So that was disappointing, and to be honest with you, um, it's an embarrassment. The fitness center is an embarrassment. It's not something that, uh, we can even compete with other than embarrassment. And this is something that. We can, we can do right away. We're not asking for fifty million dollar renovation or a hundred million dollar renovation, we're asking for a hundred fifty thousand dollars so that our kids can get. A good physical education. And that's what it's about, it's about a physical education. And right now, unfortunately, you know, you go into that room, it's not gent friendly. It's just, it's not up to the classes standing. So, you know, I just don't want to see us kick, kick the can down the road for the year, you know, because it's like. This stuff should have been done four years ago. Now I've been advocating for this four years in a row. Like, it's happened, advocated. It, it's just, it just keeps getting kicked down the road, we can't do this, we can't do that. Like, it's like. We need it. It's part of our wellness committee, I'm on a subcommittee for that, and one of the things that we're trying to do is an after-school program. And it would be great that we could live without the gym per se, but we can't because there's no room in the, in the basketball team to take it down that. So there's no really even way to, to take one of the things that we're working for in the, in the wellness committee is to get after school programs. We're not able to offer that to our students right now. And it's a shame, it's, it's, it's a shame. You go to Marshfield High School, you go to Abington High School, you go to Rockland High School, you go to Cituate High School, you go to Hingham High School. I mean, you're at all these other high schools and they have a fitness center that's designed for children to be able to exercise. We don't offer that here in Cohasset.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I'll, I'll, I'm always supportive of fitness, and I think everybody on this committee would be behind you on that. The question is, is we need to find an additional hundred fifty thousand dollars.
We're only asking for fifty.
But that's kind of like, you know, when, when they say no payments for ninety days, you know, ninety days, come, we have to make plans. So we only need fifty right now, but that comes in obligation pay a hundred fifty thousand dollars over the next four years. So we need to source those funds.
In the meantime, and hopefully never use them, maybe return them.
And what would be great is if we can put this on here, get clearance, and then this thing sell funds. And then we have cash flow that we can use to reinvest in other places, in our, in our fitness, that would, that would help bolster that fitness, that revolving account.
I guess, Dr. Solomon, I look to you for guidance here. Is it possible, I mean, so we're talking a year out, the, the price is gonna go up eight percent, nine percent. So it's gonna be a one sixty five ask, you know, we just asked for that.
No, Paul, that's not what is happening. We're saying, we need to know ahead of time at this today's price that we can fund the whole project. That, that's what we're discussing.
No, I know that, but I'm, if we're gonna fund the project next year, is that what we're, no, so.
No. This is a capital budget request.
Right.
So that's looking forward at future payments. We know that the revolving fund can cover the first payment. Great. We need to know the other payments are covered if fundraising and all these other options don't meet the price, right? So we're saying, can we make sure we have this money? And then if we don't need it in the future, have.
Right.
But we need to know it's there.
Could we, thank you, could we vote to. Extend fifty thousand dollars out of the revolving account, because I think you talked about. And that to be applied to. And they might fundraise the whole thing.
Correct.
But this fifty thousand will at least get started to maybe paint or to, to do some kind of.
Ms. Owen, do you need a vote to use fifty four money out of the revolving account to do renovations, like painting, promoting the ramp? I think that, I think the fifty thousand dollars would be the approval of the administration as it is right now. What you need the approval for is the additional funds.
Right.
That we need to get.
Okay, so could we possibly put out the two hundred thousand dollars as a request for capital? But in the meantime, uh, ask Steve to make some kind of, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that you can do. Physically, fitness wise, I mean, I can, you can take a, yeah, you do need some machines, but there are things that he could do to boost some kind of athletic program. I mean, jump ropes to, uh, to, uh. I mean, we have, uh, TRX is already there, so he would need like padding for the back of that. Have you guys noticed that when you're walking to? Those, you need padding floor for that. So I would, I would be inclined to just ask Steve to have a, what can we do now? Approach till May, right? So that we could fund maybe a stifin for something as, as medicine balls and. Whatever. I'm talking about the, especially, to be honest, especially here in, 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 in winter, where we don't have that high participation rate. We don't have any odds for those going, right?
We're just, it's kind of back to the, what we can do right now.
Yeah, but I think you answered the question about what you had said that, um. Steve has the, or Dr. Solomon has the authority to go into those accounts to buy some fitness. authority to go into those accounts to buy some fitness equipment that would be necessary for us to get over the hump so that we can add this to possibly May. And if we get it, that's great. It's all renovated, ready to go, and we have some fitness programs that are involved.
Yeah, the issue right here is balancing it with other needs and making sure that we are just making the call that the committee wants to because we have a lot of other needs on the board here. I'm fully in favor. I mean, and, and are there things we can do? Yes. Okay, absolutely. It's just, it's just a long-term plan.
Yeah.
That we have a lot of long-term plans.
And maybe that's what we do, right? We go back to the vendor and say, okay, we have fifty thousand dollars right now. Figure out what, what we can get for that fifty thousand and what's wrong with it. Then, then the fitness center, now.
Without committing money we don't have.
Right.
And then, and then in May.
And then if they fundraise more money or capital proves, then we know we can afford.
So we can get even one year. We know the equipment's about fifty thousand here. So, you know, the, the other, the paint gang, and that's very minimal. The ramp is, we don't know what that is yet.
Can, can, can I ask a question? We, I know that this, that this, because I think the point in time issue we have to accomplish is we have this capital funds request. I believe that has been submitted, right? At this list here, has that been submitted?
No.
Okay, when is that due?
December first.
December first?
Yeah, but it's, we're.
So we're, we're, we're on the schedule.
But we're not, but it's, it's not like we're way, we're way behind schedule, so we're just working with.
No, so I, I mean, I've had a conversation with the assistant town manager.
The question.
She said, as soon as we're ready.
The question for the committee, I think, right now is do we want to find room for an additional two hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on this request list for funds?
Yes, yeah.
So do we have?
Can I say why?
Yes, absolutely.
Because as we get into it with the town, at some point, they're gonna isolate our request as schools request.
Yep.
And the likelihood of things passing as a group historically is much better than an individual item. And over time, throughout this conversation, we can say to them, hey, by the way, we just raised fifty grants and now the number's gonna be lower, right? And so maybe at some point, we say, we want to change that budget number prior to it going to town.
So.
We'll have a higher likelihood of getting the money for this than we could.
So on the initial question, there's some appetite to have this included list. Do we have any views on where it should go on this list, right? I think the zone target is number fourteen, our priorities. I don't know if we necessarily need to prioritize it because as you described, Mr. Carr, this is a, this is going to be a living document for negotiations. So maybe the path of most experience is to just see if we have a resolution to add it to the list at the bottom and then use that as a tool for our discussions.
I just moved to number eight.
That's exactly what I was second.
Do I have a motion? So.
He just said.
All right, second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And the zone, please provide draft capital funds to include the two hundred thousand dollars.
Two.
Am I putting a whole two hundred dollars?
Yeah, I would say two hundred.
Okay, come on.
Let's just, let's just, for the record, let's make the rest of it clear. Do you mind paying the rest of it, including the two hundred thousand dollars for number eight?
I, I, the motion was to insert a two hundred thousand dollar request for the improvement of the current fitness facility at number eight on the list of capital.
Let's just.
Second.
You have a second again, on paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. There we go. So can you please include a two hundred thousand dollar request for fitness center above number eight? Pushing everything else down.
Number eight.
Um, okay. So we do have, we do have a future capital needs discussion. I think we covered some of that. I don't know if there's something different on that.
That was it.
So that was it. Food services update, I don't really want to.
I mean, I think that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to waive that until next meeting. I would like to abandon the agenda, but let's just keep moving.
Can I, can I just make one? I, 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 I do, I have respect for town. I just, I just, I was kind of horrified that I saw Lucky Charms in the venue. We shouldn't be branding Lucky Charms. It's just, it's just, and, and I saw one parent say, you're gonna need a plot tart. And it was during town meeting and the parent had the opportunity to like, I, I just think we need to really look at the wellness committee, committee when we meet in January just to outline what we should be promoting. I got an apple, it was delicious.
Very good suggestion.
And there was, there was a Nutri-Grain bar, there was lemon and berry, and delicious, and I was happy. It's just that when you see Doritos and all the other stuff, it's just, it's, it's just sends a bad message because we shouldn't be promoting that.
But it is allowed from a federal law, quite a deal.
No, I get that.
So we serve at our school all the time.
Yeah, well, they get those big food companies have their pockets in the federal government. So, you know, they don't have to be in Cohasset, you know?
Even though it says Lucky Charms, it's still the law.
I get that, but when they go, the idea is, I just want to finish my thought. Please, the idea is that we're, we're, we're marketing a product and branding products that I can forgive. Lucky Charms, and there's no food in food shops, okay? That's my. So I, I, I'll, I'll address that in our wellness committee, but I did want to, since it came out, I did want to point that out.
I just heard that the operator said it.
Right. And, and to be honest with you, we worked, we worked really hard for two years to put that one thing in place. When I saw that, I, I, it was, I was, I just, so I did want to mention that, but I'm sorry.
So we'll table the first food service update. Transportation, this is a placeholder for any key issues of transportation. I don't believe there are any specific transportation updates.
So I, 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 I would just quickly like to mention that, you know, I, I, I feel like things will come to a head fairly soon, if they haven't already, with these constant bus updates. I would be frustrated if I wasn't to know. I, in fact, came to know because we asked, it just occurred to me, yeah, I'm, I'm fairly tolerant to just take these things, right? Because I know operationally how difficult it is to manage this, this, this school district. But the number of these changes and schedules last minute has prompted me to question what's going on. So I had posed a question to Dr. Sullivan and Greg Sotcha, our transportation director, just saying, hey, look, what, why all of a sudden is this happening? This wasn't happening before. So what is the, 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 the changing condition that like, sort of, there has to be something? And the very short answer is we no longer have substitute bus drivers. Because when we moved from the, we moved from the two-tier to the, the three-tier to the two-tier model, we had increased routes and now we need more drivers. In the, in the prior models, we had, first of all, a transportation director that was not a regular bus driver, and this research is. So he can't serve as a sub, and we also had a sub. Now we have zero subs. So if someone bangs in sick, it's immediately disrupting our service and.
Him or his driver.
And, and, and there's a driver shortage. It, it also seems to me that there seems to be an inordinate amount of, I mean, that, that would mean that one of eight people is, is, has some sort of sick issue at, at least two times a week. So that, that seems inordinate too, but I just wanted to put it out there so people understand the major issue here is that we no longer have substitute bus drivers. But we, we, we are, we, we do need to endeavor to figure a solve to this because this is not, I don't think, it, it's not a tenable situation long-term. Not only for the parents, but also for the administrators who have to, imagine, it's difficult for you to get an email an hour before school dismissal saying that, oh, you have to be at the bus stop fifteen minutes earlier, like if you have a kindergarten or something, you have to be there. Or you have to arrange childcare, that's stressful. But imagine having to ensure that the children are being transported at all with, you know, two hours notice or something like, that's also difficult. But I think we need, we owe to all, everyone involved, all stakeholders to figure this out. And I don't think now's the time to do that, but I thought it made sense to mention it because I just had this discussion with Dr. Sullivan and Mr. Sotcha a few days ago.
Yeah, we don't, we don't disagree.
I mean, we do have two of our potential drivers testing the first week in January, so hopefully, hopefully they pass and we have two additional drivers.
That would be great, so. Just want to throw it out there.
Everything you said is accurate.
And things, I agree with you, and I know that there are things I put, like, two drivers, but it should be a priority if it is. So with that, I think that concludes budget resources and governance. Teaching and learning, I think, was, is a light debate as well.
Yeah, so one of the things, and I'm turning over to Dr. Collins, but we may want to go really light on this this time only because one of the things that we're going to be committed to is bringing examples of the teaching and learning that are happening based on the data that we've explored. For instance, a prompt that's being used or an approach that's being used. And Dr. Collins does have some material, but I, I, I'm asking, I'm wondering if we might want to defer that till next meeting? Because we do have a meeting right after break, by the way.
Yeah.
So we should actually talk about the agenda.
I'm, I'm happy if Ms. Collins's report is nothing to report of the meeting.
I, I, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Collins.
You're welcome.
And so then, report, any reports from subcommittees?
We kind of touched on most of ours while we were talking about the gym. Is there anything else that came up?
Seasonal rate.
We're wrestling with one of these seasonal rate things. And then Sue's doing a good job negotiating that, I think, with this. We're not quite there yet, but.
Well, I would like to see here where that's going. I mean, we approved that, and not, not today, we'll put it in the future, you know? But that was one of my concerns is whether or not we can crowding people out of the fields or what we do to make sure we're good.
It's one of our bigger, one of our bigger points. A challenge. We did have a school facilities committee meeting on the town side last night. Things that we, I addressed with the principals. Set up a subcommittee to pick a specific, specific school and try to get to see what those needs are. To be honest with you, as, having, sitting on the facilities committee on the school side, it is refreshing to know that there's a town side to that. So I bet, I think at one point that we should, we should invite Jason, the chair, to come in and talk to us about like our needs. So if we could, maybe, I'm next to John. Invite him in to kind of go over notes of what we're at. It was a really good meeting and, you know, I knew Craig serves on a note and Craig do all the work he's done to, to expedite this whole committee. I just gotta say that it's, it's refreshing to see some really good town leaders that are getting there with past and present. So it's a really good committee and I'm proud to serve.
Policy subcommittee update. Lance Leslie and I met again and have kind of defined our goal as a subcommittee. And you'll all be thrilled to know that we are doing a even more thorough review of the binder and kind of, at the analysis point, I would say right now of what, what has been reviewed by our school committee and dated as a revised policy, and then what has not, or what is more than five years old. So I don't know if it's good or bad news, but the news is there are two hundred and forty policies that are either five years old or have not, have no date. So Lance has some high-tech stuff that he's been doing and we're, we're gonna be tackling it in chunks so that our committee can get eyes on everything, we can have dates on everything and have a policy binder that has been seen by all of us, has a revision date, and then can be in a cycle to be, you know, monitored over time and not have unknowns as a part of it. So that process is underway. It's in good hands and we'll be putting things across your desks very soon.
Well, the, what we are doing is using document comparison software to compare our manual to the standard MFC manual and see where the changes are, and that will highlight areas that may need attention, may need to be made for the district, highlight policies that we don't have, that we should consider having, and how they also may have that we might not need. So that review is, is, as I said at some point. And that would conclude all of my updates. And I think that concludes the agenda item. With no topics not easily anticipated by me, I don't believe we have minutes to review this meeting.
Just one item on the minutes category. I, Lydia and I were looking at the dates when we went through the last group and I think it's my fault. I think I didn't include Jennifer on one set that I sent, I think I sent to both of you guys. We're missing a couple in July.
Oh, yeah.
But why don't I just send out a new group to make sure we have everything? And I'll just copy Jennifer on that.
That's great.
In January, we can clean that. I think we're just missing like two or three. Yeah. But I think we have, I think the answer is, I think we're, don't tell anybody.
Yeah.
I won't, it's public. So future agenda items, what I have is a potential meeting with facilities committee. We'll see in July, the missing meetings. At some point, we'll talk about seasonal rates, the transportation solution. I think that's something we should put on the horizon as future agenda items discussed. We're obviously going to talk about more development budget and.
Food, food services.
Food services update, that's, that's coming for, for next time. And then I'd like, I, I think we also talked about doing a CSCR presentation.
Yeah.
And I think that's all I have. Anything else? Anyone like to do this?
Sorry, just for going.
I'd like to discuss, at next meeting or the meeting after, the sick policy for students. This no fever for twenty-four hours issue. I'm not sure that that's actually, I, I want to know if that's our policy. It's not in line with the state policy, which is or, because I think it's born out of COVID. I just want to look at that closely because it's seemingly arbitrary, you know? So my child, this arose because of my own personal experience. My child was sick at two o'clock in the afternoon. I come and the nurse informed me that there's a minor fever. So they're out automatic twenty-four hours until, so that means the next day with the concert and so they're gonna miss that automatically, regardless of how they're feeling the next day. And, you know, sometimes, as we know, with, especially with elementary age kids, these fevers come and go and they can wake up feeling, you know, right as rain the next day. Obviously, if they're not, then I trust the parents to hold them back and say, my child is too sick to go to school. But I don't know that the twenty-four hour rule is something that's mandated. I just want to look into it more, maybe, but I, from my preliminary evaluation, looks like it's born out of COVID and it's either no fever or symptoms remain mild and they test negative for COVID. That's not how it's being presented, so I just want to, I want to look at that.
I know someone on the policy committee. We'll be back.
Yeah, I also, just from being in schools for the last forty years of my life, vomit and fever, you have to be twenty-four hours vomit free or fever free. That's been an ongoing rule. It's not a COVID-specific rule, so I'm just.
Okay, so, but where, like, why is that a rule? Where is it? Who came up with it and is it right for our discussion?
We'll, we'll, we'll find out.
We can find out. We can absolutely find out. I'm telling you, it's not COVID-specific.
It might be a thing, okay? That, you know, I don't know, you know, maybe Jimmy Carter established this. I have no idea.
To be honest, I don't think I know. I know, but I agree with you.
Any other future agenda items? Hearing none, what I would do now is we are going to move into executive session for reason number three. Reason number three is we have collective bargaining and strategy. So it's for, it's executive session for two reasons. So we're going to have a two agenda items executive session. What I would like to do is entertain a motion to go into executive sessions, a roll call motion, without reconvening the traditional meeting. So this, this motion will move us into an executive session while adjourning our existing meeting. That way we don't have to come back and do the song and dance of then adjourn our existing meeting.
May I make a motion with a supplement to adjourn executive session for also for reason number four, which is the deployment of security personnel or measures, which is session strategy related there too, because I have a shot that I'd like to discuss.
You may make that motion.
As long as we state it on the record, I don't think the reason has to be posted in advance.
That's correct.
Yeah, it can be any reason, we just have to say if we're starting session.
So we have executive session, then I guess our intent motion for executive session and terminate in the open session, not to re-adjourn for reason number three, collective bargaining, reason number three, litigation strategy, reason number four, deployment, deployment of personnel measures and discussion strategy there too. So do I have a motion to that back?
Second.
Second. All right, is a roll call motion, Mr. Carr?
Aye.
Mr. Duni?
Aye.
Ms. Downs?
Aye.
And Mr. Brown?
Aye.
And Mr. Diallo?
Aye.
So that concludes our, our traditional meeting. For those of you on Zoom and stuck with us, thank you very much. We're going to executive session and after that meeting we'll adjourn, so there's no reason to stay on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.